Okay, still on. So it's good.
Oh, I saw it. Yeah, I saw last time. It was great. Yeah. That's what I said. That's what I said.
Dennis goes up.
Yeah, it was great.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the School Board of Sarasota County. Today is May 6, 2025. Today's workshop will go over three different things as planned on the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Connor, please.
Thank you, Board Chair. It's great to see everyone today. And as we enter into this workshop, our agenda looks like this. We'll start with student progression plan as we bring this document annually to the board for approval. And typically, we will update that based on changes in legislation or any other new programs or initiatives that we are encountering in the school district. We at least bring it once. We obviously can bring it multiple times if needed if things do change. And so we'll give you an update on that. And then we will move into strategic planning updates. So our strategic plan is in full force, and we are accomplishing a lot of things that are outlined in the strategic plan. And we'll spend some time today in pillar four, specifically 4.2, to talk about facilities, planning, construction, food nutrition, and transportation. And then we will move into the last part of our agenda, which is pillar two, centered around student support services. And we have some extensive updates, some great things that are happening there that we'd like to get your feedback on. So that's our agenda. We're going to begin with our Deputy Superintendent Rachel O'Day to go over the student progression plan updates.
Okay, good morning. So I'm joined here this morning with Dr. Michelle Anderson, our Chief of, our Director of High Schools, and then Dr. Chul Chapel, who is our Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Jennifer Manelli, the Chief of Elementary Schools, and Ms. Cara Bryant, who's our Director of Middle Schools. Very happy to be here with you this morning. As the Superintendent said, this is an annual process that we go through when we review our student progression plan to make sure that we're incorporating any new updated legislative changes or any practices that we may have refined or areas that we feel like we could advance. So just some tweaks this year. Last year, we did far more work with this. We had a lot more legislative updates to incorporate, some that had happened within that school year and some that may have been previous that needed to be folded in. And we rewrote our comprehensive reading plan to incorporate the science of reading, which then dictated some changes in that student progression plan. You'll hear about the comprehensive reading plan next month, but for now, we'll just focus on the tweaks made in the student progression plan. Starting with that, our, as Mr. Connor already stated, that purpose, and I just shared a little bit more about that, but moving into our comprehensive updates, something that we wanted to focus in sharing on was, number one, the academic intervention plan. This was a legislative update from last school year. We did take this very, very slow, and the reason we did do that is because there is an abundant amount of notifications, depending on what the concern is, whether we're concerned about a potential disability or we're concerned about just underperformance. It could be academic, it could be social, emotional, and there's legislate, legislation aligned to notifying parents of this information. But what we determined was that it was very overwhelming. There's a lot of notifications related to statutory and just best practice. We wanted to fold as much of that into one notification process as possible, K through 12. So with the onboarding of focus and having that platform at our fingertips and letting that become in sync and a part of our work this past year, we are now putting that AIP, this new AIP plan in place, in focus, that will incorporate most of our notifications that statutorily align. And again, it can progress, starting with the lightest notification, but there is a progression typically when you're being notified of concern, being provided support and intervention and documentation. And if that's not improving or correcting the challenge, then we continue to progress towards the, one of the ultimate plans would be a 504 or an IAP. So there's a progression in there, and we have folded that into this AIP plan. I'm very proud of the team for the work they've done. That includes the curriculum team, the chiefs of each level, and Mr. Binzwanger and his team to really make this happen, and something that we're going to launch at our Summer Leadership Institute with leaders, and that they will roll out with their teachers into the school year. And again, this would be paperwork light, right? Instead of having multiple paper-based forms and some electronic, it will be housed in one place and have an appropriate progression depending on the concern by level. So we're excited about that. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Anderson to continue to share some of those comprehensive updates and add on to anything that I missed.
And so just to add on, at the middle school and high school level, the academic intervention plan is something that we're going to use to not only notify parents about course or credit deficiencies, but also other behavioral academic attendance issues and concerns. And when we get to middle school and high school, the secondary level, it's really tracking our students' progress towards graduation and their post-secondary planning. So this is going to be another layer of support that'll align with focus to allow all the data points necessary to provide a comprehensive overview of a student's progress and how their parents can know what's going on with their student and the next for them. And then additionally, one of the things that we have done through this student progression plan, because it is also going to be published digitally as we are updating hyperlinks to any administrative code, school district policy, or state legislative policy and decisions that are aligned to the portions of our student progression plan. So when parents, families, and community members have questions about what they find, it's like one click away to what the state is saying that we have to abide by in order to be in compliance with their policies and our legislative practices. Additionally, so the hyperlinks, statutory references and policies, then we've updated language on our foreign exchange student transfer credits. And one of the areas of growth in our student population has been some foreign exchange students and coming from other countries. And this allows us to maintain the accuracy of student transcripts on their pathway towards graduation and also help determine their athletic eligibility and keep us in compliance with FHSAA. We also put policy and put information and language in place around student transfer grades. So when students are transferring into our schools from another district, another state, or from homeschool, that the teacher will have a 20-day window. If there's not 20 days of grade collection for the student, the teacher has an opportunity to post an incomplete and then allow the student to perform through the rest of the quarter or the semester in order to determine a grade that's based upon student performance.
That change was based on teacher feedback and our level chiefs working with principals and teachers when we were having students moving between schools. And the practices varied, and it was stressful on the teacher because if I had the kid for one day and report cards are due tomorrow, somehow I have to give them grades, and that wasn't accurate. So we really need to streamline that process between our schools to make sure that we could take our grades from a previous school site and then incorporate the time that we've had with that student, and 20 days was, was the threshold that we decided on. So that was just, again, responsive or seen in the field that needed to be strengthened and cleaned up.
And fortunately, in our internal system, the information does transfer. So if a student starts off at, say, Sarasota High School and then goes to Venice High School, their information and focus does transfer, so that allows an ease of access for the teacher of record in county. It's our students coming from out of county that we need to be able to collect a real measure of student performance before we issue them corresponding grade. And then we also have updated language around home education, student academic progress, which is allowing us to collect documentation that requires evidence from the home education process that the students are making academic growth and achievement so that when, and if they do come back to our public schools, we have an accurate record of student progress and achievement before they come into Sarasota County schools. Okay. So those are kind of our general overall updates for the whole comprehensive plan. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Chapel, who will talk about elementary updates.
Thank you. Elementary had really around three, three or four big updates. The VPK information in relationship with a substantial math deficiency was not even prevalent, and so we made sure to add that. We updated additional information about the substantial math deficiency parental requirements and notification and the type, the different expectations when it comes to an individualized progress monitoring plan for a student with a substantial math deficiency in grades K to 4. And that's all based on statute language as well. We added recess and PE requirements, those requirements for K-5 students. And we also, like I said before, some information specific to VP eligibility that is new to our statute language this year.
There's no middle school updates. Everything's working well with them. And so, so while Ms. Bryant is here, she gets, she gets to just be an audience member. So for high school updates, there are three significant changes to our high school information in the student progression plan. The first and foremost is around the implementation of focus, which is our new student information system and our, our teacher grading platform, grade collection platform. And so with focus, we now post our grades at the end of each semester for all of our high school non-EOC courses. EOC courses require a 30% calculation of the EOC at the end, so we don't have a final grade posted for students until that's taken. So for all other cores, we are posting grades at the end of every semester, which has many advantages. One, it gives a real accurate idea of exactly where it is in terms of their GPA. It lets, you know, when they go to that whole applying for college and academic success, their, their GPA is, is as effective as possible of the work that they've done. It supports credit recovery if we need to, because now we can recover in half credits as opposed to whole credits. So our students who may fall behind for some reason have more opportunity to earn those credits to be on path towards graduation. So that's some of the things that we did. So that's reflected in the student progression plan. We also clarified some language around the certificate of completion, which are for high school students who make it through their four years of, of high school with a 2.0 or above GPA. We clarified some language about their ability to participate in the graduation ceremony. We want to keep the graduation ceremony, a ceremony for the students who've met all the requirements. Students who are at a certificate of completion have not passed, passed the state assessments that are required for graduation. So we just clarified some language around the, that piece of, of process. And additionally, to support the graduation rate of our ELL students, we have an alternate pathway to graduation for our students, which is to supplement their scores on the 10th grade fast. So if they don't pass the 10th grade fast, or they don't pass a concordant score in the SAT, ACT, or CLT, there are measures and portfolio work they do through their English classes to document their progress. And one of the things we added to it is almost all of our students in Sarasota County take ace general paper, including our ELL students, and many of them are successful on that assessment. So if they're successful on that rigorous college credit-bearing course, we want to use that as an option for them to meet their graduation requirement for their ELA score. Those are our, our major updates.
We'll take questions at this time.
Ms. Siegler?
Thank you. Well, I wanted to, I appreciate the, when you highlighted the notification frequency because at some point, I know there's a law that we can, families can just tune it out, and it's really important information. And there's so much work behind it. So kudos for you guys for really trying to find that balance. The question I could have had on the recess and PE time requirements, I know that statutorily there's, I think it's 20 minutes, which for K through five seems so little. I know, again, how do we do all of the things that we have to do within the limited time? But just knowing the kids have Zoomies and like their ability to actually retain information and what have you. But I've also had, not intermittently over the past couple of years, we'll, you'll have, you know, a family reach out if there was, if the student was in trouble or whatever, and they were being removed out of PE. Can you talk to me kind of how that works? Because I would be the, you know, as one board member, in my personal opinion, I want every student K-5 to be out getting their Zoomies out as much as possible for our teacher sanity and for their own ability. But, you know, I just want to better understand how we, how we manage that. And is there an opportunity to enhance the amount of time that they have recess?
Yep. So we've come a long way with documenting PE and resource minute, or PE and recess minutes, not only in our people progression plan, but also really in practice and within their master schedules. Because when we did come onboard, there were abundant amount of concern coming out of the community that we were not, we were skipping that time, we were not doing that work. So Chief Manelli has done extensive work with that. I do want her to be able to respond and share in response to what you're saying, and then we can talk about if there's room for more time. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Manelli.
Good morning. Thank you for the question. So you're correct, the 20 minutes in statute is for the recess time, and then there's also 150 minutes for the PE time. The additional requirement under the 150 is that nothing below 30 minutes can count as a block of PE time. So to Mrs. O'Day's point, we've reworked our master scheduling guidelines for principals to be able to support them in ensuring that they have 20 minutes a day of the recess time, as well as a minimum of 30 minutes to count towards 150 minutes of total PE time, and that's built within their day. It does become really tight for fourth and fifth graders because the total amount of time that the students are in school, paired with the amount of minutes that are required for instruction, it leaves very little wiggle room. But we have provided resources and scheduling supports for our principals to ensure that all of that is embedded. The other question that you asked is about taking recess time away. That is not permitted. Every school has that in their handbooks where they are letting families know that that is not an option for teachers to be able to take those minutes away. That is statutorily required. Sometimes there's options built within the recess block to support students to still be able to get their physical activity in, in a structured way, but taking those minutes away is not, is not allowable. And so that's, that's not permitted.
And, and just to clarify, the adjustment, as you just said, is that new to this year moving forward, or that was last year?
That started last year. We reworked the master scheduling clinic guidelines as well as our staffing allocation to assure that our schools are provided with enough PE teachers and PE aides to be able to meet those minutes. Because our large schools, when they have sometimes up to 10 classes per homeroom, it's nearly impossible to meet those minutes with only one or even two PE teachers. So we also adjusted our entire staffing allocation formula to ensure that they have the correct amount of staff to be able to support meeting the minutes and the suggested guidelines that go in the master scheduling handbook that the principals have access to.
Wonderful. Well, my hat's off to you. Master scheduling is, it's like Tetris. I don't know, it's a, I don't know how y'all do it, and I applaud you all. I know, you know, something we talked about before, and Mrs. Barker also mentioned the unstructured play in K-5. And again, in the middle of this school day, I understand we're asking for so much to be done with very limited time. I don't know what opportunities there are, but I do hope that we continue to try to be creative in that space. But I appreciate the work you guys have done around it.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. I just have one question. Can you go over what are the requirements for foreign exchange students being accepted into our district?
I can't, let me find the page real quick, just because this is a, this work is a compilation of the multiple departments within our district. And so I bring the document together with the input and feedback and resources from school choice, from Florida Virtual Schools, so.
And while she's doing that, I'll take some airtime. Back to the restrictions to recess or PE. If someone is doing something wrong and there needs to be options, as Ms. Manelli was saying, it could be, instead of doing this, you typically do, you're going to do some walking today, or you're going to engage in this play activity with this group. Because with this group, we, we're getting in trouble every single time. And then, you know, we're, we're spending half of PE de-escalating ourselves or whatever we're doing. So you still have to be moving. It's not a sit-down timeout. It's something doing something else or a different activity that may be set up and scheduled. So if you do hear about that in the community, that, that would be the acceptable reason for someone to be diverted to do something different. And typically, if it has to be some type of timeout during the day, we talk about lunch detention, that social time where I'm sitting anyway. It is difficult in that entry day because so much is structured. So where do you have that time that they're not missing core, but that I could make you rethink some of your actions so that you are performing better in different situations? So you do hear about lunch detention a little bit more, but you should not be hearing about not being engaged in physical activity. Yeah.
Okay. So one of the qualifications for foreign exchange students is that they have to be here on a visa, a J-1 visa. In addition, they have to show proof of English language proficiency, being able to listen, speak, read, and write prior to enrolling. They do not qualify for Title III supplements, though that's just a, a small. And they have the option of choosing to earn grades that they can then take back to their home country and their home schools, or to operate on a pass/fail basis.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So what is it that the, for lack of a better term, the certification, does a family have to meet to have their foreign exchange? Because I know in the past, there was a lot to it, and many foreign exchange students we couldn't accept, because they're, the host.
The host family.
Family was not credentialed the way.
And so they would have to go through the organization, which is the Council on Standards for International Education Travel.
Okay.
And I can't speak completely.
No, that's fine. Because I, I.
But if they go through that process and they are vetted.
Sometimes we get those emails and they want to know, and I can, I always refer back, but that hasn't changed.
So that has not changed. No, they'll have to go through that process and be a vetted and approved home host family, and then work with the student coming from there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you.
And just as an update, Sarasota County Schools has not hosted foreign exchange students for several years, especially since the advent of COVID. So what I'm excited about is that we recently updated our policy as a board because we are anticipating on opening that back up and having host families. So we're, we're excited to hopefully maybe even do that as soon as next school year.
And Mr. Parento has been a partner in working with that. Did you have anything to add that the team maybe didn't mention? I'd love to hear that.
No, just, we, we did spend a lot of time revising that policy and also working with these organizations that go out and try to find host families for foreign exchanges. That way, we can make sure that they're checking all of the boxes ahead of time so that as we get through controlled open enrollment every year after that window has closed and all of those notifications have gone out, then we open up if there is available space for foreign exchange families. And Ms. Wheeler in the Office of School Choice has been working with those organizations and keeping them updated on what our process is, where we are in that process, and where we may be going forward.
Ms. Parker?
Well, Ms. Siegler stole my question. I did, I had actually the exact same question. But I just wanted to add to that, I am still hearing from parents whose students are being required, if they didn't finish their homework, to sit out the first like 10 minutes of recess and, you know, complete the homework, and then they can participate. But so just to be clear, every student K through five in Sarasota County isn't entitled to 20 minutes of recess, whether that's structured or unstructured, may vary. They may have to walk the track or whatever, but they are entitled to that time.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then the other piece, Ms. Siegler did touch upon it, but I, I do strongly about unstructured playtime. I worked in a county where we had a big push from parents, add an additional 10 minutes, and then we had a 30-minute recess block for all of our K through fivers. And we saw a really big jump in our academic scores, a decrease in our behavior. And so I know, I know that, that it's tough, but I would like to, to add my voice to that thought, that I, I really would love to see a 30-minute, even if it's 15 and 15, you know, when, when that's part of the conversation, I'd love that to happen. So, thank you.
Yeah. And I think our only constraint is just the mandated minutes that we have. I mean, they really don't have minutes in the day to squeeze that out. That's going to be very, very tough, but we can review that. We did do our master scheduling clinic already this year, which incorporates, you know, our wind block and all the tiered supports that we need to have in place.
to 20 minutes of recess. Whether that's structured or unstructured, may vary. They may have to walk the track or whatever, but they are entitled to that time.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the other piece, Ms. Egler did touch upon it, but I do strongly about unstructured playtime. I worked in a county where we had a big push from parents, add an additional 10 minutes, and then we had a 30-minute recess block for all of our K through fivers. And we saw a really big jump in our academic scores, a decrease in our behavior. And so I know, I know that it's tough, but I would like to add my voice to that thought that I really would love to see a 30-minute, even if it's 15 and 15, you know, when that's part of the conversation, I'd love that to happen. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I think our only constraint is just the mandated minutes that we have. I mean, they really don't have minutes in the day to squeeze that out. That's going to be very, very tough, but we can review that. We did do our master scheduling clinic already this year, which incorporates, you know, our win block and all the tiered supports that we need to have in place for students that either are excelling or that are struggling. We have mandated minutes for all the other content areas, and then obviously stepping it up and making sure that the PE and recess is in there, but it is difficult. But things to consider, when someone, when teachers are in instruction and they're ahead of the pacing guide, or kids are meeting goals and making, and hitting the mark, they're incorporating a lot of that time also. Where we're having social time, we're having celebrations, going out for additional minutes of recess or PE and unstructured time, it's just not mandated. But that's best practice in celebrating and cultivating that family in the classroom. So that should be happening. It's very rare that teachers don't engage in something that kids like to, to keep them motivated and also to celebrate and reward them. So keep that in mind, too. Yeah.
Ms. Edwards?
So I don't really have a question per se, just more of an observation and accumulation of having been a school member and listening to progression plans over time. So what I'm not as concerned about playtime, I think we've covered that, and we've got folks concerned about that. Where I'm more concerned about is in the notify parents category. And by that, I mean, when I first got here, what I noticed about how the school district handled complaints, everyone was very busy checking boxes and doing all of that, and they forgot that there were students and parents sitting across from them. And so what I'm concerned about, not in any way in terms of judgment or in actual observation, but what I heard in the conversation is notify and do and go through and progress and move forward. And I'm concerned that compliance can take over the fact that we have students, they're little people, and they're parents. And so when we just notify a parent, to me, that's not good enough. We especially, and looking to elementary and middle, by the time they get to high school, I feel like, with the exception of students that we've, that have moved here, that we didn't have pre-K through the process, that when we have elementary folks that are, and here we're talking academic progression, Title I schools, my personal experience is that the academic and the behavioral notifications are side by side. And so just notifying a parent on the first or second infraction isn't enough, in my opinion. It's getting the parent to the table. And that is a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of work, and a lot of effort. And so what I would be interested in hearing is the amount of time goes into trying to make that happen, the kind of success rate that you're, that folks are having. Because then I could go back to the superintendent and say, particularly in elementary, and then particularly in middle school, we have to have more supports. We have to have more ways to get parents to the table. Because what I'm real concerned about is I've seen, when I've been in expulsion hearings, it's too late. It's, we missed something all the way through the process. I don't mean we, I just mean that somehow or another, kids fell through the cracks, and just because we notified everybody, that student still ended up in this conversation. So what I'm really trying to stress is that I love the plan, I love, I love Dr. O'Day, really, she dots those i's and crosses those t's, beyond, beyond, more than anyone I've ever seen. But it's, I have to really stress that sometimes, if kids are falling through the cracks in spite of all of that, then we have to find, we have to modify the system, especially in those earlier grades, to make sure that we're getting the parents to the table, we're having the right conversations, we're getting the right supports, so that by the time they hit high school, we should have prevented all of the things that we as school board members have to deal with on the far side. So as I said, it was more of a comment, and no judgment to what you presented, but if there needs to be more supports in those areas, I'd rather know that and try to figure out how to afford it.
Ms. Egler?
I'm going to piggyback on that, because it's a great point, and it's, and I can, even in the conversation yesterday with, when we were talking about the student discipline plan, I know I'm not saying that right, but, and the challenges there. And so even as a parent with, you know, moving parts, you have the best intention, but you may not be on top of everything. And so, you know, to the support piece, I would be curious, and this doesn't have to necessarily be now, I mean, these are things I think you guys work on regularly, and if there is a gap missing there, that, you know, what is that support piece? Because you're absolutely correct, getting parents to the table is so, it's so important, but it's far, it's easy to say, and so much more challenging to actually execute. And it's not, it's not on the shoulders solely of staff. It's what's happening on, you know, inside that household, you know, how many jobs do they have? Are they communicate properly? You know, we even hear when you register your child, and there's the different selections of how you want to get notified, and then some people deselect, and then all of a sudden, they're not getting the proper notifications. And so I'm not sure, over the year, since this team has really kind of, you guys have really reworked a lot, if, to the point of, we did use to sadly, it was only compliance. And I feel, just by personal opinion, feel that that has shifted significantly because we're going so much more granular, student by student, family by family. But to Mr. Edwards' point as well, I mean, are there areas, whether it be community partners, or, you know, obviously, we have limited resources, but is that a gap, or do you feel like we have actually improved in that space?
Yeah, so there's, I think, three things that come into play with this. I do think we've improved because we've, we're working, the AIP being streamlined. It was very confusing. Every time an update came through, required a different notification or a new notification, and was it going to be paper, was it going to be virtual? Where do you get it? Oh, I didn't focus, or do I get in rooms, or is it going to come home in the mail? Should I check the agenda? I mean, think about that, right? So just receiving, we had to clean up the receiving end and align notifications in a progression that they're going to go in anyway, if it progresses in that direction. So putting that in focus and cleaning that up is step one, to just end-user friendly, and then the person that's working through those notifications or managing that student's profile can also be more engaged than just sending a notification. Because before, it was clunky and cumbersome, and it didn't work in sync, and now it's not cumbersome, and it does work in sync. So that will be something new that we implement. But the other component that comes into play is going to be, we do have some contract language about what you can expect people to do or not do.
Gotcha.
Right? So is it best practice without any kind of language or directive from the superintendent or anyone, that you call someone, you get them on the phone, you talk about the concerns, if there are any? These are our children. The children are just as important to the teachers as is to the parent, and we have to be, I believe we're mostly constant of that, I can't say perfect, but there should be, if it's a notification, because you may have a substantial reading deficiency, we should be talking, right? You're going to get the notification, because it is state statute, but I'm also calling you because there's a human factor in this that we also have to manage. So those do happen simultaneously, doesn't mean that we don't call, but it means you have to have it in writing, right? And so what I'm, I think would be best for us moving into summer is I propose a work session on our MTSS design team. There's been a whole year-long worth of work with, led by Ms. Minnelli and Dr. Chapel, regarding what we're going to do K-12 differently with three different schools, and also in support of our middle school director, high school director, and our level chiefs. Lot, a lot of work going on there, which comes into play with all the mandates, and then also what we're doing to support the student and how we're interacting with the families. It is encompassing all of that. You have the AIP piece, and then we also have some, you know, handbooks that also come into play in contract language. But I believe those three things, we can share with you. Here's what the AIP does, here's how it lines up with mandate, but then here's what we also do outside of a mandate, here's how this new MTSS design team is also working to plan a rollout for the 26, 27 school year. Ms. Minnelli, or Marinelli, you've said several times, making sure we don't overwhelm the system too much change. We wanted to do the MTSS thing much sooner, but we also recognize that it has to happen, people are ready. So we went into a pilot stance, doing a lot of creation, piloting in three schools to roll out in 26, 27. This AIP piece is part of that as well. It's kind of like one leg of that horse. So I think it'd be great to have that presentation with everyone, because we're in the design stages, giving us that feedback, where do you see it, where do you not see it, where can we push more on the human side, on the support side, and bake that into the plan. I think it's time to do that.
And if, Mr. Jim, if I may, blow up, and as you guys proceed through that, so I always consider, when I think of IEPs, or that whole language is just so foreign to some parents. And so while you go through that process, again, not adding one, but it's one more layer, but it's an important piece, and if there is something that we can help, I mean, is that something that we run into as a roadblock? Is parents now, okay, my child has a reading deficiency, but I have no idea how to even help them? You know, what does that look like? Are we, are we already there, or are there additional supports that we need to be discussing?
No, we're there with the notification of that, and then what does that look like in the school to support students to overcome that reading deficiency? Because if I'm deficient in an area, doesn't mean that I turn into a student with an IEP or a 504. It means I need this targeted support based on the data sets that we're using, and I need to closely progress and monitor that. Because kids typically with the right support will come out of that and continue to succeed, and if they do not, that's when we move into the pathways in considering the, a true disability and an IEP. Yeah.
And I wasn't saying solely IEP, I just use that as an example of just parents being like, I have no idea, and it can be overwhelming and very emotional. And so whatever layers we're talking about, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do do a lot of training with the ESC team and the EIFs at the school on how do we write high-quality IEPs, not only write them, because that's the compliance piece, but then what does that look like and feel like when a parent's in the room? And going slow, and if we need state support, we do state facilitate IEPs at times if things are really complex. Or Dr. Hutchinson would be involved if they became really complex. So there is a lot of support, just depends on what people need. But again, I really do believe we can share in more depth, if that is, you know, of the will of superintendent and the board to hear more, we have a lot that we can share there and continue to get feedback as we design.
Ms. Parker?
When I was hearing Mr. Edwards talk about the difficulties of bringing parents to the table, I couldn't agree more. And I wonder if this leads back to our discussion about parent-teacher conferences. I know it's an old-fashioned sort of concept, but having parents physically present, having that dialogue is worthwhile, particularly if you're doing it in an evidence-based way that leads to good outcomes. So I know that that's a bigger discussion with bargaining and with our parent, or our teacher association, but I just, I mean, hearing you talk, I'm like, well, why couldn't we just have a parent-teacher conference? That seems like an easy solution. So I just, I just, let's keep that in our minds somewhere.
I'm against that. It didn't work out well for me.
Mr. Edwards, please.
So it doesn't surprise me that you can codify down to, when we're notifying, we're also making the phone calls. That makes me feel better, but still not 100% comfortable. And here's where the difference is. Again, when I first got here, I used to get a lot of presentations from a lot of different departments about, here's what we do, here's what we do, we've got it all, we've got, we've got it, we've got it, we've got it. It's never perfect. It's never going to be 100% catch everyone. And so what I'm most interested in hearing is where the common denominators are of where the same kinds of things are happening over and over again, and what kinds of supports do we need that would make it better, that would catch more students, that would involve more families? So for example, when you're making those phone calls, what I would experience in Title I schools and families is that there are multiple jobs. People aren't always available when we're making the phone calls. Excuse me. So actually, reaching somebody in the evenings and on the weekends, well, that's not someone's job description. So do we need to have a place where those phone calls are being housed because we can't, the school can't get to them, or the teacher can't get to them, but we can give them to someone who can? And what we also have going on at exactly the same time is student services, and Dr. Moore's area is expanding in terms of what kind of nonprofits and what kinds of partnerships do we have available, and that could 100% dovetail in where things aren't working, and how to improve it just by having better communication and understanding what isn't working. And those are the kinds of conversations that I love having with the superintendent about ideas and suggestions about how to fix those pieces. And you can hear from, at least, and I think most of us are saying the same thing, we want to get to those families while they're early on, while the student is in elementary and middle, and we have a chance to affect the long term. It's, I've been in ninth-grade classrooms where kids have their heads on their desks and they're not paying attention, and I think to myself, oh my gosh, how did that happen? Where did it go wrong? And understanding that not all the students were ours for the, for the whole time. But I'm, I've got my point across, and those, and I, I'm so appreciative that we're all on the same page, and it's a progression, no pun intended, of continuous improvement.
Superintendent Connor?
This is great conversation. I really appreciate it. I want to remind everyone, too, that where you solve problems is at the lowest level, right? There's no better person to solve a child's issue in the classroom than the teacher. So it's what we do to support teachers in bringing efficiency and planning so that they have more time to make phone calls and reach out. Ms. Parker makes a great point, buying more time with, within the school day where we can have parent conferences. It's such a struggle with the precious commodity of time. And that's where I see the biggest barrier in all of this. We then look at a concentric circle, right? The teacher is the best problem solver for the child in that classroom, especially if they're manifesting behaviors or anything in that classroom. Then that support from the school-based administration, council, all of the supports that's built in right there at the school site tends to solve, I would say, 90 to 95% of the issues. Then we look at the bigger from the district outside of that circle, is where we talk about Strategic Engagement Office, where, you know, we had a presentation at our last board meeting around the great work that's happening there. So you've got parent universities, things to bring positive interactions with our parents to be more positively engaged, because so often, the ones that won't walk through the door had bad experiences when they were students in the, in the school. And so the schools are really bending over backwards to make this happen. And in Title I settings, that's what Title I funding is for. It's how do you support parent engagement? There's a complete fund that is specifically for that. And it is always going to be a challenge, and you're absolutely right, we will never be 100% effective in this, but we're, that's what we strive to be, and we look to bring those barriers down over and over again, and engaging community partners and all of that. So I think this team is on a great path towards that, as you can see through the strategic plan and some of the initiatives. Will, you know, will we ever arrive 100%? I hope so, but I know that's going to be a challenge. But I am excited about the work that's being done with MTSS and the academic intervention plan that we'll bring back to the board to kind of dive deeper into that piece, because I do believe it is, you're right, it is not just compliance and notification, it's the relationships we build, students, teachers with the parents, and that can be a challenge because their time is stretched and all of that. But we're going to continue to make that a focus around relationship building, a culture of care, so that parents feel more welcome to come into our school buildings when there is a problem, and they're not running and hiding. And I think we're going to get there.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you for that, Superintendent Connor. This is, this is so multi-tiered, and I just have to say a few things. Listening to the conversations and having to update everything, education has become so micromanaged at the state level or the federal level, to where it's so prescriptive, this time, this time, this time. The people that get left out of all this are our teachers. And they know all about what is the emotional status of a child, the developmental stages, and many things that we brought up here today, especially in kindergarten and first grade, those are developmental issues that have been overtaken by micromanaging and what the legislature expects our students to perform. So I have a real problem with that, and I always have, and I probably always will. But I think talking about being a retired educator who, you know, we, teachers try everything, but there are families who do not engage. You can send out the social worker, the counselor can go to the home, but there are families that don't engage. That doesn't mean you give up, but they don't engage. Not going to change that. We have to accept it. And, I mean, this morning I was reading on our school board, the legislative update, and it's all documentation and paperwork. That is what I get from teachers and counselors, that they are so burdened in the paperwork that is required. And I don't have a good answer for that, because most of it's mandated. And when you have people saying, I'm going to leave because I cannot keep up with all the paperwork, I thought we had a Paperwork Reduction Act. Somebody tell me what that means, because it seems like every year, more Somebody tell me what that means, because it seems like every year more and more comes. And I'm preaching to the choir here, but I want it on record that I am bringing these things up, because it's a great concern when we have teacher shortage, we have counselor shortage, we have school psychologists, school social workers, we have all the supports and more and more and more. And it's not just pay. It's the working conditions and environment. And I think what I would like to see is that when we are planning, you all are planning, you take a look at what can we do out of the box to provide more support, especially to the support people? You know, you just, I know I always advocate for counselors, but I also advocate for teachers and psychologists and social workers, because I know what the burden is. But more and more on the counselor's plate, and they can't work with kids. So how can we, because we know we can't hire more people, we're looking at budgets, how can we alleviate and use other people for some of these roles? So it's, there's just so much in the whole MTSS process. That's where you have the team. And when these families, when these problems that kids are experiencing, whether they're academic, social, emotional, that's where you discuss all that. And if we're lucky enough to get the parent to come in, you create the plan. But you need all those processes. And I think, I'd like to challenge people that are not educators, because, you know, you hear, oh, teachers should be doing this, and counselors should be doing that, and the psychologist, blah, blah, blah. Go substitute for a couple of days and see what that classroom is like. I challenge, I challenge people on this board. Go substitute for a couple of days. Not one day, but do like five days in a row. That will. And I'd even like to challenge our legislatures, when you're making those decisions, before you make a decision, you come and you substitute 10 days in a row. And you see how, and you've got to do everything that the teacher does. We'd see how things might change. So that's it for me. Thank you.
That's a lot of challenges, more than the ice bucket challenge I saw through social media with that, Ms. Ziegler.
Oh, no, I can follow that up. It's like a mic drop. The time piece is the struggle, as was noted, and that's been the case. It's only gotten harder. I remember one of the first things I asked when I would go visit classrooms is like, if you were king or queen for the day, what is it that you would like? And it was always time. That still remains the case. And I know that, to the point that was stated, is the compliance piece, the paper work, has only become more intensified. I do know that deregulation is something we're focused on, and I don't know if those are additional areas. The challenge is we're in a state where, I think we're a great district, but that doesn't exist in all 67 counties. And so some of these are responsive to bad actors, and that's the reality. I do think that over the course of time, we've had some, and I hope, you know, Mrs. O'Dea, you mentioned some of the, you know, systems in place and the technologies that we've utilized to try to alleviate some of that. And of course, it's not going to be 100%, but, and I don't know, we know we've spent a lot of time on this, and it's important, because I think our teachers get into the profession to make, to change lives. And there's nothing more frustrating than when they're unable to reach their students because they're being burdened by all of these other things. And so, and you mentioned, it's not just pay, it's the working conditions, and it's 100%. I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, but it is almost as if that we are being a, meaning we, K-12, to solve all of society's problems and educate them. And that's untenable. And so I think that, I know that is a reality. And while I don't know how much, I think there is more opportunity to look at from the deregulation standpoint, because again, not to be continuously repetitive, but I do find ourselves in a really good position, because we are a district that is accelerating and excelling and, you know, and streamlining and such. And so, you know, if that's something that we can look at as we kind of look forward to the legislative session, I'm all ears. If there are other systems or anything else that we can do to help alleviate that, because if we are able to, early on, if our teachers are really able to start and lift up the students, you know that's the trajectory that really just allows them to thrive. And so those are the kind of conversations I know you guys are having every day. And when it comes to a lobbying effort, those are the kind of questions I would have, what really is unnecessary? And because I guarantee you, it was a response to something negative that happened however long ago, right? And those are, those are things that we can, I think, succeed on. And I do think it's important when we talk about even negotiating. I think that whatever we can do to help support our teachers so that they can get to the students and have that time, that we do that. But I know that, yeah, so I feel your passion. I love it. I think that moving ahead into the legislative session, we should seek out different opportunities to alleviate time. I don't know if the systems that we put in place and the different platforms are helping with that, because I think even our district has 30 additional minutes, right, that other districts don't have. And when I think about parent-teacher conferences or unstructured pay, but then I go to the master schedule, which I, I don't know if anyone's really understood, that's the, I don't know how you guys do it. It really is, it is a piece of art. And so I know it's easy for us to say that, but there's a lot of components. And I appreciate all that work, but I know that priority is certainly shared by all of us.
And I would just say that we all agree that a parent that's involved in their kid's education in reference to social, emotional, all of it, we know that they're more successful in school, we know that they end up being better citizens, we know that they have an opportunity to thrive even in the worst conditions. You know, I think that we're all on the same page in reference to that, and we understand, too, that it is very, very difficult for teachers. Back in the day, Judge Hayworth, when he was here, one of the things that we looked at doing was taking all of the social services and all the providers in the county and really focusing on the K through 5 and having that interventions at the lesser level. Because, you know, if you wait, to Mr. Edwards' point, if you wait till the student is 14, 15, 16, you're not going to make that much of an impact, unfortunately, on them, because they're kind of set to a certain degree in their ways. So it's really when they're younger to be able to provide those. If there's something that we could look at, again, by putting together those providers so that teachers have that, principals have that, will have that, so they can say, okay, well, let's reach out to them, you know, like the YMCA, which I don't think it has the program, used to have anger management. And we used to send a ton of kids to anger management at the YMCA as part of trying to help them because of them acting out based on family life. So that would be, we, so everything that's going on in the progression plan is spot on. And of course, we would like every parent to show up at every meeting to do everything. And we know that life gets in the way a lot of times. So keep up the great work and, you know, hopefully that we'll continue to do that, because we have, you know, we have a lot of really great news that's coming out in reference to, and I won't say too much, but I heard that potentially the no cap to get your cap program at Sarasota High, that they may have gone up another two points in their graduation rate this year, which then ultimately, last year was their highest, this year will be their highest. And I won't say it's 95%, but...
You're not going to say it, but you're going to say it.
But at the end of the day, what I'm getting at is all of this all works to be able to do what we're supposed to do, is have that student prepared when they go out, whether it's vocational, academic, wherever it is. So lots of great things are happening. So thank you, guys.
With that, Superintendent Connor?
All right. We're going to move on to our next item. Thank you. Our next item is Strategic Plan Update for Pillar 4.2, which is facilities, planning, construction, food, nutrition services, and transportation. We're going to have some stopping points through the presentation. It is a lot of slides, and we want to make sure that there's time for discussion. Dr. Kemp's going to lead us through this, and the team's going to come up, and we'll get started.
Connor and board members. We recognized from the last workshop, I wanted to just mention, Mr. Edwards mentioned that, you know, he appreciated that all the staff's time and effort and energy and putting forth presentations, and he kind of made a request for him to be sure. So with that said, Mr. Edwards, that concludes our presentation. It's about the, it's about operations today. Everything, we try to say everything works for every student every day. We know, we talk about every student every day, but it's our goal is to make sure that we're putting strategic plans and actions in place that allow us to support the entire program every day with variables we control and some variables we don't control. But with that said, today we're talking about Pillar 4, Priority 2, and creating a high quality and quality infrastructure for our schools. We're going to start out, as Mr. Connor said, there's 24, there's 24 strategic initiatives. We're going to, moving through these very quickly. So what we'll do is I plan on stopping after number eight, the Strategic Plan Eight, and we'll ask if there's any questions at that point, and then we'll move forward. So with that said, we'll start right off into 4.1. As you're aware, we'll be bringing the Capital Improvement Plan to you. Of course, that aligns with the school, everything in the Capital Improvement Plan's going to align with the school board priorities, our strategic plan, to make sure that we have the capacity management in place, as well as the safety and security enhancements and technological resources to support our students. Safety and security and budget as part of the Pillar 4, that will come back at another time when we come back and it's part of the budget process, we'll have that along with the CIP. So we're doing specific things with the Capital Improvement Plan. I'm going to just hand it off to the team. I want to recognize, they've done a great, great job, the Ops team, they work every day, long hours selfishly to make sure that things are right. So I'm going to, we're going to have just a conversation, we go through on these initiatives and let each executive director in that area talk about those initiatives. So we'll start off with our first one, which is 4.2, and it's in progress as we speak. A lot of ours are in progress of the 24, because a lot of things in Ops are not one and done. It's a continual improvement, continual work, new things we have to implement over time. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Jody Dumas, Executive Director, Facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of walk through our strategic plan initiatives on the operations side. And I think as we were talking about the strategic plan, we hope, our team hopes that you'll see a couple of things come through, which is really our focus on organizational excellence on the operations side. And that's really two specific things that we've really been focused, I think, will come through in each one of these as we discuss with you. One is really getting better at everything we do. And I think you'll see that in the strategic plan, not a lot of new stuff, but getting better at what we're doing, number one. Number two, the other key aspect of organizational excellence, we believe, is customer service. We know we've always been good at customer service, but how do we rethink what we're doing based on the customer needs at this point? And so we, a lot of focus on that as we kind of work through this, specifically in terms of how we're handling capital plan. We handle this every year. Some of these things won't do to you, but one of the things we've implemented specifically regarding customer service is, and we'll dig into some of these actions a little bit in some of these other areas of strategic plan, but for the capital budget specifically, we've, as a team, we've met with each one of our school states. We've gone out there with many numbers of members of the operations team, focused on a couple of things. One, really talk about the capital plan on their site. What's going on in their buildings? Opportunities to talk through all that, walk site, talk to people on the site, making sure that a five-year plan that you will adopt aligns with kind of their expectations for what's going on on campus, number one. But number two, we've turned those visits into great opportunities to talk about everything operations, customer service-wise. So we're talking about Sarah Dan, talking about food service, Keith talking about bus service, we're talking about custodial service. So we really focus on what does the principal, what does the staff need at the site from operations during those visits, not just capital planning. So we see those as real opportunities to kind of really glean from them, kind of what are the customer service expectations? How can we get better at what we do? As we look at strategic capital plan improvement every year, one of the things we always do is take a look at growth going across the district. That's been done, is one of the key aspects of this plan. And I would say more of kind of where's the lack of growth this year? And I think you'll see that as, as we present the capital plan to you this year, a slowing of growth, and we have responded to that in your capital plan that we'll present. Another key aspect of capital planning, especially in this day and age, is not only what are we spending, right project, right time, right scope, but also maximizing revenue, minimizing costs. And you'll see in some of the areas that we're investing in on the operations side, like ProCore software in construction services, we have never had a project management software system in construction services. We always kind of just utilize what the design builders had or what the construction managers had. We will now have our own ProCore system. All of our current partners in our contractors use ProCore. Our systems will mesh systematically so that we will have one comprehensive place, have all of our construction documents, change orders, design changes, everything will be in one place. So in terms of the project, minimizing the cost of every project. You'll see that first on Garden. We're very happy to be implementing that on the Garden Elementary project this year. All of that's driving, all those improvements are driving towards a capital budget presentation, like Dr. Kemp said, sometime over the summer with the board, so you can take a look at it.
And with that, we'll go into Pillar 2, which is actually our, continuing on with our efforts to make sure that we get better with reliability and efficiency.
Excuse me, Dr. Kemp.
How we direct funds. We will look at facility condition assessments with that as well. So we'll be talking about that a little more in detail throughout the, throughout this presentation. Another thing for reliability and efficiency, we're looking at the impact fee studies. We'll talk about that in a little, a little later, another initiative to make sure that you talk, it's very important that we monitor what's going on with the impacts, these studies that are planned for fall. We're also looking at the software that he talked about. For me, it's all about how do we get more efficient? How do we get better? How do we get better as a team? And some of these strategic ones that we have in place allow us to do that. So 4.2.2 is also looking at how are we, how are we using dollars for cost? How are we using the planning for major projects? So when you talk about properly planning for cost associated with opening up two major capital program, construction projects with Sky Ranch as well as Welland Park, we've been able to do that. We've worked with Bonnie, we've established initial student enrollment and projections with the academic services team in Bonnie. We've been able to create FFNE, furniture fixture and equipment, projections for these schools, and be prepared to open day one on time under budget. That is, that's the expectation with every project. Also working with Bonnie, the finance team and the academic services team, Mrs. O'Dea and her academic chiefs on making sure that we have the appropriate staffing and the general fund budget's necessary to open that day one. 4.2.3, we actually, it's a little bit about what Jody was talking about and the value of conversations and the courageous conversations that we have in schools with, you know, can we get better? We had a forum to conduct those capital budget discussions. Jody can talk a little bit more in detail about the data associated. I know we've met with every school regarding what their needs are and they feel their needs are. There's needs and wants, right? So there's needs and wants, and we help them balance that out. Jody, you want to add to 4.2.3?
Yeah, like I said, let me reiterate a little bit about what those conversations look like. Specifically, we're talking about walking the campus, we're talking about what we have in our five-year program in all of our departments. So again, not only facility services for maintenance of system, but you've got IT there, you've got our radio systems people there, you've got our TV people there, right? So we're talking about the scope as a whole at the districts, excuse me, at the school site. What do we need to be doing in all of our five-year plans and all of our department budget, make sure we're supporting you? A lot of conversations this year were wrapped around TV studios. And so we had Eric there from the IT side, telecom side, talking through each school about how are their TV studios working? What can we do better to support student news programs? And so those are the types of conversations we get into in these, in these meetings that may get lost. And they're not getting to the point that we need to get to, so they end up in a budget somewhere in somebody's department. So it's things like that. It's conversations about what may be on the lunch menu at a particular site. So these conversations are really focused on, what does the school need at this point? And how can we in operations support those conversations in our budget, in our, in our operations day-to-day? And so, again, a lot of meetings, but we talked about as a team potentially doing these on teams, zooming them, meeting with them, makes it more efficient for us. But there's value in being there, walking site, getting a feel for what's going on on campus, and that's what's happening. So 45 meetings, we'll do them again next year, but I think there's a lot of value in what we're doing there.
Moving on to 4.2.4 is, we transitioned, thanks to your support, we're in the process of transitioning to a model for white fleet through leasing and to be able to not only be more reliable and efficient, but to better utilize our existing resources. When I first got here, this issue surfaced, and we started examining, there's been an analysis for a couple of years. You've gone back looking at options for white. If you know, some of our white fleet was older than some of you on the dais. So us to be able to be reliable and efficient and have a brand in the community that we're proud of, puts us in a better schedule to operate efficiently, to bring white fleet online, and to actually reduce costs over time. I'm going to ask both Mr. Dumas and Dr. Little to talk a little bit about how they feel this particular initiative that you've supported is going to help us.
Well, I will say, we've been pleasantly surprised with our partnership with Enterprise at this point, and I'll let Keith elaborate on that a little bit. But all of our year-one vehicles are ordered, and I'll tell you, having been around the district for a long time, been involved in white fleet for a long time, the process district for a long time, been involved in white fleet for a long time, the process to order off state contract is very, very cumbersome. Lot of time on our part, transportation part, purchasing part, to make sure we've got POs in place. It was through the enterprise process streamlined, everything's ordered. When you place the order for the vehicle, the order actually comes back to you with the vehicle, with all the options on the vehicle that you've selected, and that may be outfit of equipment like ladder racks, everything else. You have a comprehensive view of every piece of equipment you're ordering, the bottom-line price and what that means for the lease payment. And so the process was quick, I think very comprehensive, and I felt very good about where we've come so far with the program. So Keith, I don't know if you want to comment?
Yeah, as you said, this is one that, for me personally, I'm very excited about the management of the sheer number of vehicles that we have in the white fleet, and the manpower it takes to figure out when we're going to replace and how we're going to do that. And then the ordering process is extensive, and that takes that off of our board, off of our plate, being able to reallocate the resources, allowing us to focus on our school bus fleet, making sure that we're reliable in that standpoint, that we're meeting our maintenance needs there and our purchases there. It has already allowed us to not necessarily reallocate totally, but to relocate one of our mechanic positions that was at our Osprey compound down to our Toledo Blade compound. While we're in this process, they will continue to work on white fleet, which will provide a service for South County that we haven't had, where they don't have to bring their vehicles up to the Osprey location. But that person will also start working on diesel engines and working on our buses and providing additional support there, where we currently only have one mechanic and a mechanics helper that'll provide us a second backup mechanic in that location. We do have, there's still an Osprey one full-time white fleet mechanic that as we bring this in, will continue to reallocate their duties as well. We will never fully be out of the white fleet process because there are some heavy-duty piece of equipment and things like that that we're going to have to procure on our own and replace on our own and repair on our own. But this program really does take that out of our hands, maintenance piece of it. They have an entire application that allows the operator to be able to schedule their own maintenance and drop off and do that sort of thing. Just an update to where we are currently, as Jody said, we did our first-year order. That first-year order was 55 vehicles. Currently, two of them have been produced and are being shipped to aftermarket upfitter equitters, equipment bases, and then we have 20 that are currently scheduled, which then leaves us with another 20 that are still waiting to be scheduled for production. So it's nice, and we're already then, because that's happened, in the opportunity to start talking about what is the next phase, right? What is the next set of vehicles that we need to get updated and make sure we're in a good place?
So as excited as I am about the opportunity to update the fleet and have a better-looking brand in the community, rolling around in the community, I'm equally excited about the better use of resources for Keith's mechanics. The general public does not understand, most people, even in those that work for us, don't realize inspection requirements, the monthly inspection requirements of all the buses and what has to be done. It allows us to take our employees to focus on school buses, and that, the safety inspections, making sure all of the general maintenance and safety is done on a monthly basis is not to date. The state requires a lot of inspections for our buses, and we're certainly glad to repurpose those resources to operate more efficiently. You'll see there's a theme here, so as we move into 4.2.5, it's all about maximizing and leveraging the tools we have to be more reliable and efficient. 4.2.5, we're in progress with, and it's updating the impact fee study to inform infrastructure investment decisions. I'm going to let Ms. Comanati speak to this issue, but one of the things we're working with the county, we are working with the county, and piggybacking off of the impact study, Tischler and Bice that they're utilizing, that'll be coming to you as well. So with that said, I'll let her talk about the impact fee. The impact fees, even with existing laws, do not allow us to maximize, where we'll always be 50% behind where we need to be with impact fees, but it's a step in the right direction, Ms. Comanati.
So thank you, Dr. Kemp. So in alignment, Action Five, Planning Staff has initiated the process for updated educational impact fee study. And as Dr. Kemp mentioned, this will be on the May 20th Board Agenda, seeking approval for piggybacking off the county and Tischler-Bice's current contract. Tischler-Bice previously conducted the district's impact fee study in 2022. That study recommended increasing the impact fee to the maximum allowable under state law. Per that state law, the increase was capped at 50% of the current rate and must be implemented over a four-year period. Even with the maximum allowable, the study showed that Sarasota County Schools ranked the sixth lowest in educational impact fees in the state in 2022. So following the 2022 study, the Board adopted a resolution in May of that year requesting that the county revise the ordinance, the county revise the ordinance in November of 2022, updating the rates effective March 1st, 2023, after the 90-day required period. Year four of the phased implementation will begin January 1st, 2026. After Board approval of the contract, we anticipate completing the new study and the associated approval process in time for updated rates to take effect January 1st of 2027.
Thank you. I want to reiterate, she said the sixth lowest in the state. So impact fees, just so for the public and for those listening, impact fees can only be utilized for new growth. The entire purpose of impact fees is supposed to be to offset the cost of new growth. Well, all you got to do is look at Ms. Penner, and she'll let you know with this look on her face that we, I mean, they're nowhere close to in offsetting the cost of growth that we've experienced. So as we move forward with impact studies, we certainly need to maximize and leverage every available dollar that we can to see impact fees for the growth intended purposes. It'd be great if they offset, but we have significantly low impact fees compared to the rest of the state. That does impact our ability to offset, and it impacts the capital budget. So with that said, I just, I think it's important to note that sometimes people think that growth is associated with a lot of money that comes in with it. Well, it takes impact fees, and when impact fees are often transferred to those that are purchasing and buying houses. But that is a cost needed to be able to offset the classroom additions and the growth of things that we're going to have to do. So appreciate the support on the impact fee studies and that we maximize what we can, even though we know we're going to be 50% behind legislatively. We'll move on to 4.2.6. 4.2.6 is streamlining our process with small projects and improving agility and effectiveness. Jody mentioned some of the software that we're using with that, and I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so I think, I apologize, I think this is a good example of trying to get better at what we do and really listening to the customer. We, for years, have had a small projects request process in place that comes to our capital projects team. We meet typically every other week to talk through everything capital budget-wise, including small projects that are being submitted by campuses. Couple of criticisms over the years is that, number one, once a project is submitted, our customers, our principals, our APs don't know where that project is in the process. And because it can go wild, the projects come in multi, all throughout the year, and we typically look at them one time during the year to try and prep for summer work. And so trying to make sure we are looking at how we're communicating back to the customer was very, very important to us. And then a submittal process for larger projects. And so even though we call this the small project process, there was really a void of how a principal, other than calling Jody or Jane in construction services, if they had an idea that said I needed to build the wing or something like that, how did they submit for larger projects? And so we would see our small project process, a lot of times become a way principals got larger projects in front of us. So really, the team looked at this in two things. One, created a dual process, so there is a process in place still to submit small projects, but there is also a different avenue to submit larger projects. So the principal, if they felt like something was coming up and had to make sure they had on their radar, like, oh my God, I need more portables next year or something like that, there is a way for that to get submitted now. That was number one. And then number two, the team really went through and utilized smart sheets to be a way to communicate back to principals in terms of what the statuses are. So every time the team changes a status regarding a project from submitted to approved, whatever it might be, there is a brand-new email process that's in place to make sure not only the principal knows about it, but the facility manager that may be administering that project on the campus also knows about the status. So two strategic improvements there to try and really do a better job for our customers.
And the interesting thing about portable is nobody likes them, but everybody seems to want one, you know? So when we go to meet with the schools. Well, that leads us to 4.2.7. The next two slides are really about, we talk about it quite a bit, is strategies to reduce our reliance on portable classrooms for a lot of different reasons. But we do that when we redistrict, when we look at redistricting efforts to balance capacities at schools, what we can to eliminate portables from there. We also, as Jody said, developed that tracking, portable tracking document to plan where these placements are going to be. And though this is marked complete, it's always an ongoing initiative because things change every year with that. So the next slide is also part of the portable reduction, and it kind of shows you the tracking and planning tool that's been developed to track our portables district-wide and those that are owned by us. We will do additional portable reduction with every time we rebalance schools, we redistrict, or we're doing a new build or on simultaneous site build like Garden, we'll be doing portable reduction projects at Goseo Garden and as well as Polytech as we move forward with that. That leads us into 4.2.8, which we're in progress with, that's performing, and it continues with the theme of reliable and efficient operational work. So a facility condition assessment, referred to as FCA, facility condition assessment, that actually are utilized to guide where we use our dollars and how best to use our dollars based on age of systems and based on life cycle. I'll let Jody briefly talk about this one, and then we'll stop for questions for the first eight initiatives.
So when we present a capital budget to all of you to consider each year, we try to as much as we can base it on a couple of things. One is those meetings with customers, what's going on on school sites? Are we thinking about the right things? So principal input, A input, that all comes back into that plan. Facility manager input, right? Because they're on those campuses day in and day out, what are they seeing, what are they hearing? That all comes into the five-year plan. The most important thing in the five-year plan is our facility condition assessment, and that is, every five years, we've been doing it for years, we go and we hire a consulting firm, a professional consulting firm that brings in engineers and architects, they walk every space, every building, and what they do is they rate systems and deficiencies. And so schools, buildings, systems that have higher levels of deficiencies, which means there's something not working right, or they're aging out. So an HVAC chiller that's 15 years old, those create higher levels of deficiencies, which create a high-level FCI at a building or a site. We know those are systems we need to be looking at proactively. And so where we have those higher-level FCIs, again, that's where we drive some of our decisions in terms of how we're spending capital budget. That comes into you in the form of asset preservation pieces that kind of come together for you guys to make decisions on. So it is critical for us to be up to date on that, and really, when you get out five years, it's time to do it again. So we'll be moving in that direction. Come July 1, it's budgeted in the facility services capital plan that you'll be approving to go out and bring those consultants in and have a condition assessment update done by December incorporated into the next year's capital plan as we send it to you.
So the FCA and the FCI, the index score, there's a method to the madness. People often ask us, well, how come this project gets picked over this project, or why is this in the CIP in this year versus a four or five years out? Oftentimes, it's worst first. It's the worst first, the age of the mechanical systems, the age of the condition, where we are in the replacement cycle. The F, the facility condition assessment and the index score that goes with that allows us to, you hear me say, you can have strategic priorities require strategic abandonment. Sometimes you have to prioritize based on worst first and what we need to do moving forward. That is the first eight. If you'd like, we could take questions on the first eight and whether they're fresh in your mind before we move on to the next set.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kemp. So I had a couple of quick questions. Two are specific, one is kind of an overall. And the reason it all comes back to the same thing, we know with safety and security and reference to portables, you know, we've had portable issues, you know, I want to say portable issues, but you know, you have portables that are as old as the portables we have. I know that we do everything we can, and we end up housing students in them. So one of the things is, what is the, back in the day, we put concretables at Brentwood, and we also put them at Pineview. So we know that we have a large influx, so let's just use Tatum Ridge, which would be one of the questions, as they've received even more portables, where we've taken them from Lakeview, taken them from Ashton, because we know that they're harder to secure, there's no covered awnings, there's lots of issues for the kids and the teachers, I hear that a lot of times. If we know that we're going to be there and they're going to be housing, why would it not be effective in order to do a concretable, which we know better storm preparation? It's just a better facility for kids, especially when we know there's got to be some kind of computation to say, okay, we know that it's going to be X amount of kids that are going to be here for X amount of years, like at Brentwood, like, there were quite a few of them were built at the time. Why would we not be utilizing them more because we know that they're going to be better, and obviously, they're not going to deteriorate?
Well, that's a great question, and we do. We look at, we look at the feasibility of providing a more hard structure, so to speak, concretable, we're looking at that as we move forward. But I think even more importantly is the awareness that our schools, where we're not built originally for the safety and security requirements that we're expected today, whether it's single points of entry, whether it's, you know, the use of a lot of portables, no doubt, portables can be unsightly, they are perceived to be less hardened than, and they are, they're less hardened than a concrete building. But as we move forward, we're looking at those options. Jody, want to add?
It's a great point, and I think that when I think about your question in my mind, Mr. Enos, I think about the temporary nature of a portable. And I think when, so I think it's a campus-by-campus decision, I think that's the question we have to ask ourselves. So in the example of Tatum Ridge, I think portables make a lot of sense there because it's truly temporary, and you'll see in your five-year capital plan we're submitting to you again this year, the Lakewood Ranch expansion for another elementary school that'll relieve Tatum Ridge is still in the five-year plan. So I believe that's a good use of portables because it is truly temporary in nature. Another change you're going to see this year is really to try and reduce our reliance on portables and getting into consideration what you're talking about. The Northport High project, we've been talking about that for years in terms of HVAC renovation, that is funded, we'll be going out for selection here pretty soon. As a part of the strategy on that campus, we're going to be using some impact fee dollars to build a wing first, because we know we have capacity issues at Northport High, that wing will be the first phase of the project, that'll be swing space for the project as the project gets going, but then it'll be capacity for Northport High as we move forward. So that's an example of how we think that's more of a longer-term solution for Northport High versus just portables down there. And the other thing I would think through is, talk about is just a little bit about making good decisions on the front side and why it's by school-based. Middle schools, we tend to have more capacity right now in our sites, more capacity for students at middle school. And when we make decisions about permanent buildings in place, for example, like a Booker Middle, Booker Middle has one of those you've referred to as a concretable in the back, that has not been utilized for years in terms of capacity needs at a particular school. So to me, that's a decision where we're now wasting space, and we wasted dollars on that project. So I think it's really a team approach and making good decisions campus-by-campus based on student population growth. And again, the key question is, are we truly talking about something temporary in nature? Or are we talking about something like Goseo where the portables have been there for years, finally replacing them? So I think that's the key decision.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I hear that because I hear that from teachers, I hear that from the community, the issue that we had at Lakeview, you know, a couple years ago. So there's a lot of things, it's just not the safety, security, it's just being able to walk from the main building to the portables, they're not covered, you know, in the rain, and we obviously have rain and inclement weather here, plus it's hot. So that was one of the questions. The other thing is, I also have got, and that's just, you know, because I've also been there for almost every day for the last 11. What's, I've heard a lot of, from Sarasota High School, I know that the chillers, the air, everything is really working itself out there. Another one of the big questions that I get is reference to their VPA. Their VPA, I know we have the East Gym there, it's one of the gyms that doesn't have air conditioning, the band practices in there, basketball's in there, volleyball's in there. I mean, that's just a class issue based on, they have a state-of-the-art gym there, which is amazing, at Sarasota High School. But where are we in reference to? Because that's the other thing I hear a lot about is, you know, you look at Booker High School, you look at Riverview High School, you look at Venice at the VPAC. Sarasota High also has a very robust arts program, so where are we? Again, a lot I know with us, when we get planned, we know where it stands. We're just as an informational update, because I know we have a lot of questions that are coming from the faculty and the parents from over there.
So we did, so the rebuilding of, I would say, the last phase of renovation on the West Campus is the move to a VPA building on that campus, and we've talked about that scope before, that scope also adds capacity to the campus. So we now pick up capacity in 13 and 14 as we build the VPA, as well as the current design has a couple of classrooms in the VPA. And so that is funded in the five-year plan by the hair of our chinny-chin-chin, I would say, I mean, because the five-year plan is really tight, but we've managed to keep it in there. It's, I believe, and I, let me send the date to you, I don't want to get the date wrong here in public, but I will send board members where it sits in the five-year plan. But it is funded, it is in there, and the hope will be to transition from 13 and 14 renovation right into that project, which will get us walking off campus with a nice, complete east and a nice, complete east and west campus once and for all. The other big thing going on at Sarasota High is, there's a lot of fencing and reorganization of how we're bringing kids on to stu, on, on campus and coordinating Open Gate moving forward, and so that, that's a piece that we're considering too, that's moving forward this summer. So a lot of stuff going on, on Sarasota High, I don't want the date wrong, Mr. Enos, but I'll send it to you as soon as I get out of here.
When we present the capital improvement plan to you in just a few weeks, you'll see, and that's the opportunity for us to scrimmage, you know, remember how we can do anything, we just can't do everything, you know, all at one time. So we have to strategically prioritize where those fall within the five-year plan, but we do have it in the five-year plan. So that's always a plus to be in the plan in five years, that's good. Any other questions?
And I, I appreciate that. Like I said, they, they're, they're asking about it just because that's, you know, they're very inquisitive because they also see all these other performances, and so especially from other performance community there, they, they want to know, because that is, I mean, that building is like walking back in time.
It is.
It is what it is. So again, I appreciate your questions, and the five-year capital plan will be significant, especially we'll look at everything else that's going on with the, of the new schools. Again, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Barker?
Um, I wanted to circle back to the concretables versus portables, and everyone knows I'm not a fan of portables, but I do also know that there is, there are things coming through the legislature right now that are making it much easier for charter schools to take over schools that are, are not at full capacity. And so I wonder, how does that fit in with the concretables versus the portables? Like if we use a portable, then I would imagine that doesn't count as our permanent fish capacity, but if we use a concretable, does it?
Yes, it is classified basically as, when originally put concretables in, now we're going back numbers of years, but they were billed as being movable. Reality is, they're just not, it would cost more to move them than to just leave them kind of where they are. So they are basically part of the main campus, they're part of our fish capacity on that campus, and they're, they're kind of there to stay.
Okay, so, so that thing to be cognizant of moving forward as we, as we see this come down the pike. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about impact is really quickly, because this has been something that has sort of just tweaked me for a couple of years, that our impact fees are so low, and we have developers coming in and developing all this land in Sarasota, and I think they should be responsible to pay their fair share to help us build the schools that now we need because you built these homes. And you said we're sixth in the state, where are we in terms of like other coastal counties or other counties that are experiencing high development? That seems like it'd be, you know, an important data point as well.
I believe Ms. Cabanati has some of that information, if not, we will certainly get it to you as far as the, the comparisons of where we fall with lots of demographics, not just the coastal counties. You know, the, the two, two points, the portable point is, the more temporary we can be, the more flexibility we can retain, the more we can move portables around. That's the only good thing about portable classrooms, is gives us that flexibility to pull it, move it where it needs to be. Like, for example, we, we balanced Ashton, all these portables are going out and already designed, repurposed at another place that it's needed. When you get into the permanent classroom capacity, the classroom additions or concrete portables, it becomes a little more difficult to do that. So our academic, while she's looking up that information, our academic services team and all of our, at work of our principal creating a brand, you know, to create, create demand for the programs, the best thing we can do is fill up our schools with people that want to be in Sarasota County schools and maximize the capacity. But where we can with the portables, we can move them back and forth. Impact fees is, is interesting, the developers always, they just, they just don't like the impact fees, but the bottom line is, impact fees are truly a pass-through, and, and it helps us offset that. Do you have the information that you can provide at this time, Ms. Cabanati?
So this is according to the 22, 2022 study that we had performed, and this provides the chart of where we fall with impact fees. So in 2022, Collier County was a number, the sixth highest, Pasco County was the eighth highest, Manatee County was 11, Hillsborough County 18, and we were at 22 with increase. Thank you.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you, Mr. Enos. I really like the piece on the customer service, because, you know, Jody, you went through the original Studer, and that made such a difference of the communication piece and, the value that we placed on employees. So I like that. And I think Mr. Enos touched on Sarasota High School, so I don't want to repeat a lot, but that is the one school I'm getting phone calls, and ironically, the reason I'm getting the calls is many of those people that are calling me, I was their counselor at Southside, and now they have kids that are either there or have been there or getting ready to, so I guess they just think that. But that, that auditorium, I was there last week for their masked presentations, and I shared with Mr. Connor, I was like, you know, you got broken seats, you've got, I felt like I might fall through that stage. That is, you know, the original auditorium from when, a lot of people don't know that Sarasota Middle School was on that campus, and then when they built the new school, you know, out east, but that's still the auditorium from, that they're using. And I, and, and you know, when you want to be competitive, so you have parents coming and you're looking at that, and then you see all the other schools, and you're like, wow, what about that? And as you know, Sarasota County residents here, they want our schools to look nice, that's why at least 10 years ago, we rebuilt, tore down the old Philip B. Shore School and rebuilt that, Brookside, I mean, we've really, and now all those schools need to be rehabbed because I equate it, and this is what I think the community, when you own a home, you're always having to update it, and it gets more and more expensive. Same way with our schools, you just can't let them go, because then, then you get into all kinds of issues that then put you on notice with the state, so you don't want any of that going on. So, which leads into the impact fees, I've never been a favor of impact fees because I know those get passed on to the consumer. So one way or another, all this gets passed on to all of us, and so, but I do think because of the cost of everything and how we don't have all the capital monies like we used to have, that we've got to, we're going to have to address that impact fee, and nobody's going to be happy with it, I'm not going to be happy, everybody up here that owns a home's not going to be happy, but we have to address it because we have got to have our schools be absolute best, because, you know, we're, we are the best, so our schools need to reflect that. And also, I get a lot on Southside, which, Jody, you've been wonderful, Dr. Kemp, superintendent, I mean, you know, that, that is an old-school 1926, so, and it has been redone, the floor's all torn up, everything, but it, I know that's probably on the five-year plan, because it's going to need a whole new redo like Bayhaven, and that's going to be difficult because that's an old school, and it's a historical, so you've got to preserve all of that. So I'm glad to see that these are on because those are big, big deals, and, you know, Sarasota High School is kind of like the flagship high school of, of, and it needs to reflect that, and Southside is kind of like the flagship and Bayhaven of our elementary schools. And people love the look of those old facilities. So I like that, that we're addressing that, and I like how you're doing the submittal process for the small projects, because I know, I, I mean, I did it, you know, you start with something small, oh, by the way, how about this? So I think it's good that you, you look at the small and then you can take it to the big, because most of them, a lot of them do turn into big projects. So I'm really glad that, and I like that facilities condition assessment, because that, that where you get, you see everything, because we want to keep our schools as top-notch as we can. So I appreciate the thing, and we're never going to be able to keep up with it, but at least, at least you show that you're committed and you're trying, so thank you all that.
Thank you. If we can return to the PowerPoint.
Hold on.
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Edwards, please. I'm going to go quick, because we've got to stay timely. Just quickly, I know Ms. Marinelli mentioned the Studer Group, isn't operations group still working with Studer at this particular point in time? I don't want to jump ahead, I'm assuming at one point, we're going to have a full-blown presentation, but I, I never hear it mentioned, so it gives me like, hmm, and I know that came to us as through the courtesy of Berancic, I believe. So just want to remind everyone that internal and external customers and customer service, I'm looking forward to hearing that report. Enough said.
Yes, sir. Our work with Studer is extremely important. So we're, we forward at 4.29, or the next four slides, we've pretty much touched on, but I just want to briefly touch them quickly. We can move into some food service and transportation items that I think you'd be interested in hearing about. So the 4.29, it's all about efficiency, cost optimization, you can see there's a chart there, we have key performance indicators that we're tracking in facilities and all of our departments to track our costs associated with that, also helps us for projection planning in the future. And part of that process in 4210 is that we have scorecards that we're looking at, they look at it monthly in meetings, but we also look at annually how we're doing with the scorecards for all our departments to look at the continuing improvement. Are we meeting strategic objectives? Are we meeting initiatives? What needs to change? What key performance indicators need to change to make sure that we accomplish the, the ultimate, the, the ultimate targets? 4211 is the work order system that Jody mentioned, working with Brightly, we're actually conducted it, we had, you know, they've looked at several different work order systems, it's always an opportunity to improve with that, especially as far as tracking and, and time to completion, those are, those are metrics that we're looking at along the way. That is, they've been selected and they were in the 2025 for purchase, so we plan on implementing that new system in September of 20, September to February of next year. So move into 12, that was the fourth reliability and efficiency item, as we're looking, Jody mentioned, the construction management software that we have with Procore. What we were finding was that the industry was using one platform, and we were using something completely, I mean, there's multiple entries of data, a lot of time with architects, engineers submitting plans, construction. We have now since acquired Procore, which allows us to be in line with the industry, less double work, a little more smooth operation for submission of documents moving forward. That's just four of the, those four last initiatives that are all in progress are just four examples of how we're, we're to improve efficiency. 4.13, it's about integrating GIS technology and what we're doing with our, with our advanced transportation planning and maintenance agreement. You'll have, you have an item coming in May 20th for your consideration to support with what we're doing with our transportation management software. Briefly, I was going to ask Dr. Little to discuss this item.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Kemp. This is another one that I'm really excited, one of the things, this being my second year as a transportation director, is trying to bring us out of affectionately the teen eighties into the current time, when we talk about technology and getting away from paper and, and becoming more efficient and reliable on our services. We have spent the last year vetting various vendors and, and have settled on a company called Tyler Technologies, which is an all-inclusive platform that will take us from, from multiple independent platforms into one, so that all of our systems will instantly talk to each other, something that's changed in routing will show up, you know, for parents, for schools, for, for anybody in there. And, and to me, that's the, the biggest thing, other than also, if you've looked at our maps, this will provide us updated maps, it's on the county data as new developments are created. If you went out and you even looked at Sky Ranch on our map, it's just a big open space with no roads, but we've had to create our own roads and our own stops and things like that. This will bring us, technology-wise, into an area where all of those communications that the, the district is doing through GIS and ICSI and those sorts of things will, will support this platform.
So the next slide goes on to the same. 14 looks at the, 14 looks at the dispatch operations and efficiency. You know, one of the things I consistently heard my first year here is the, the customer service problems and responsiveness in, in routing and not maximizing where we can bus, the bus, bus codes, bus numbers, we had high attendance, and how do you balance that? This is part of addressing that for this year, so it's 14.
Yeah, so previously, we, we've already purchased and are implementing a new dispatch software. We've expanded to three channels for dispatch, we've divided the, the district in half, basically, the Proctor Road is our line between North County and South County for servicing our schools and our buses, which allows us to more efficiently and reliably deal with emergencies or accidents or things that happen on, on the bus, because now that, that traffic on the radio is cut in half. Both of those are monitored 24 hours by safety and security, so if a bus driver happens to go on a field trip, they don't have to worry about what channel they're on, it's already being, being monitored by them. As well as dispatch, we moved them into their own self-contained office, which is where our routing used to be in Building 7 in our Osprey complex, moved it back into our operations part, so that dispatch can truly work as an independent unit on making sure their focus is on answering parent or school issues and concerns when it comes to transportation, whether it be morning or afternoon, but, but also not having the distractions of what goes on in our daily operations as well. At those times, they can be focused solely on that piece of it. With that, bringing Tyler Technologies on board, again, what that will do is replace the, the current tracking system that we have, so that when our schedulers and our dispatchers have to take a route and, and maybe break it in half because we're, we're low on staff, as soon as they make that change, that change will go out to the drivers within their tablets, it'll automatically reroute their system to optimize their travel that day. It'll also allow us then to identify those ones that are there when we make those changes, so that instantaneously, the parent is updated on what bus their student's going to be on. In addition, if that creates any delays, it allows us within that system to send a message from the system directly to the parent in, in that, that case. So the, the reliability, the efficiency and the, the customer service that we're going to be able to provide with a new platform is going to be leaps and bounds where we are now, because again, it, it's all real-time housed in one platform, which is multiple platforms that we currently have.
I just want to reiterate that the transportation department will work for almost a full year with Tyler before any events roll out. This, we're talking about the 26, 27 school year, where this, where after working a year with routing and getting everything correct the way they want it, then we'll be rolling it out at that time. We'll move right on into 15. That is our food service, Ms. Sarah Dan's waiting to talk about the, the MCS implementation and how we're connecting inventory with food production and helping efficiency and reducing waste where we can.
Absolutely. Good morning. We are in the process, we've completed most of the phases of our MCS implementation. As many of you remember, we had not had a computer upgrade in over 16 years. Everything that has supply chain, everything that has moved that process along, we have implemented the inventory phase, so that items that are ordered are tracked through our inventory system. Again, that has allowed us to catch errors in recording inventory excesses, so that we can move food around if needed, and then also continue to track our, our ordering. The next phase of that will be to tie it back to production records, so everything will be connected. Right now, the system tracks items served to students through our cashiering, but it will also track what is produced and link everything together, so that we can look for excesses. Also, in this, we've also moved to HPS, which is a buying cooperative, so again, we're getting things at better pricing because we're buying with other districts.
Once again, that, once again, that's part of the theme of being reliable and, and how we can work better internally. When you look at strategic action 16, 17, 18, that has to do with sustainability, we're in progress with all those, whether it's synergistic, whether our, whether it's with our energy consumption, whether, whether it's with our pilot program for the electric buses, the battery-powered buses that we're working on, but we're monitoring those pilot programs, collecting data on those, and we continue to do everything we can do for cost avoidance with, so we can sustain our, our energy efforts and, and foster a culture of sustainability. That moves us right into 19, which is actually what Mr. Edwards was referring to, when we talk about the Studer, our, our customer service, creating a culture of service excellence in, in our departments. It started rolling out with us, we've done a lot of work with HR, with Ms. Remaka and the, and the team. I will let Mr. Dumas speak to this, and then we will come back when it comes, come back with the classified evaluation piece.
So, Mr. Edwards, I think you're exactly right, there's not been a lot that's been heard about this out in the public, and certainly at the board level, at cabinet level, there's been conversations, but there's been a ton of work going on behind the scenes, and I think you're, you're about to hear that kind of explode in terms of what we're explode in terms of what we're doing and how that's impacting what's going on across our district on the operations side. We really began this process, worked with the Studer Group about back to the customer, surveying them again, right? It's been years since we had a good survey to all of our students at how are we doing? So that was the first thing they helped us implement is a customer service survey through all of our operations departments. That data came back. Step two was a lot of work with department management teams and the Studer Group in terms of, okay, the data says whatever it says, what do we do to get better at that? How do we create strategic actions? And you saw an earlier strategic action on scorecards. Every department on the option side has a scorecard, gets, got specific target goals and, and actions aligned to increasing customer service across all of our departments, right? And they're specific to each department. So a ton of discussion wrapped around that. Those are being implemented in every department. In addition, we created a, I would call it a guiding coalition of people from all areas of the district to really talk about Studer, what that means and to create district-wide customer service guidelines, expectations, if you will. And so our team, our guiding coalition's been working on that. We are at the point that we've had them pretty much finalized and they'll go to cabinet to be taken a look at. And then once cabinet approves and board approves, then you really start to see us push forward with, okay, this is what it means to be in an employee Sarasota County Schools in terms of customer service, right? So we want to standardize that across the district. So that work has really been going on a lot behind the scenes. The other piece that I will just mention that really rolled out is the employee engagement survey because so much, really the reason I like Studer and what they do is because it's focused on employees, right? It's, it's focused on making them better at what they do and be happier in their work so that they provide a higher level of customer service, a higher product when they're working for us. And so just now, Dr. O'Day and, and Ashley and.
I'll be a doctor.
Sounds good.
Ms. O'Day, Dr. Kemp and Ms. Remaca really worked hard on what that employee engagement survey looks like. And for the first time, that employee engagement survey from the Studer Group has rolled out district-wide, right? So it's for students, it's for staff, and we're truly trying to use the Studer Group as the mechanism for how we survey all of these groups in the district to try and get better. So the Studer Group is starting to get ingrained on all sides of the district. So a lot of work behind the scenes, which I think over this next year, you'll really start to hear about.
An example of that survey is actually strategic action 21. You'll just see it briefly in a minute. But we're also working, Ms. Remaca, the team, the guiding coalition for Studer, we're working on. One of the challenges we have is how do we tie this in to make the initiative real? Lots of times we do these initiatives and they just, you do them and they're done. We're trying to tie them in to making sure that our classified support staff understands how the work ties into everything we do all the way up through the strategic plan. So when you take a look at number 20, which is the new evaluation system for classified employees, we're working with SCTA across the street. We've had a committee that's worked quite a, quite a lot of hours on, on how can we refine this? This aligns to, this aligns to the, the goals and initiatives of the strategic plan and it ties in perfectly with the Studer Group to look at the core competencies, the five competencies that are in line with our strategic plan. So we've been able to do that and come to some consensus with some groups early on. Now we're working through SCTA and we're working through final processes of the draft, but you'll see that the work, the actual evaluations that are in draft will be aligned to this customer service culture that we're trying to create. I think that's really important. 21 was an example of the customer service, the mechanisms that are going into place. You can see that. We have detailed data by department that we did with the surveys that was, was revealing. As a matter of fact, when the, when it came out, there was lots of conversations about, you know, where, where the schools ranked our customer service with operations and what we can do to get better. For me, if we don't use this data to get better, what are we doing? So how, how do we get better? It's about scrimmaging on this and how we can listen better, how we can service better, how we can provide better support to, to the, to our schools and most importantly, our students in classroom. That's what we're here for. So 21 is a perfect example of what some of that survey data looks like. That will always be in progress because we'll never be finished getting better, right? You never complete getting better. We're going to continue to grow. 422 is a part, it also is in alignment with the Studer work because it's driving some of our professional learning opportunities from the data, just like in academic services, everything Mr. Connor and Ms. O'Day does, everything is data-driven. The data draws instructional design, the data draws prescriptive treatment, no different than what we're doing on the operations vertical. The data that we're getting is driving our prescriptive treatment for how we better serve, how we better serve the schools, how we better provide that service. There's always more than one right way to get there and, and that's the value of pulling all this information together. So part of that, we feel, is having training coordinators specific for classified. I think in, in the past, we, we've attempted, made attempts at that, but we, it has never really been aligned to the work. I want the electrician changing the plug in the classroom to realize how many, he or she impacts the work of children. Remember, it is about every student, every day in Sarasota County, but everything works every day for every student. That, that's the way, that's what we shoot for in ops. Everything needs to work. And they don't, sometimes I think they lose sight of that, whether it's a plumber, they lose sight of how important their work is and the end result of student achievement, but everything is about supporting children. That's, so professional learning growth is a piece of that. I will, we'll do these last two slides because I think they're really important to talk about some innovative practices and how we've kind of challenged these verticals in food service and transportation to produce a return on investment. You know, what is the ROI for transportation and food service with, you know, they completed these surveys, they completed the customer surveys for all the schools, determine how they're doing. We're looking at new menu items and food nutrition services based on, you know, how we can increase participation, no different than how we're trying to recruit students to an academic brand, no different with, we're trying to, what will increase participation? Everything from evading service lines and cafeterias to, to make them more inviting and efficient. We've, you've recently seen the reorganization of the transportation department. All these, all these goals and initiatives are in, in progress and so we can hopefully, hopefully it should result in better performance, better improvement in results. The, the last action is student engagement, the expanded menu options and the food, our food nutrition services, all our verticals do a great job. Finesse does an outstanding job working and supporting all the schools with this. So for, for, I'm going to let Mr. Dumas and let Ms. Dan finish and complete this, this slide.
So just a quick word and I'll turn it over to Sarah. She does amazing work in trying to making sure, you know, we, we attract students to our, our meal program, right? That's, at the end of the day, that's why we want to serve all of our students and that's Sarah's goal. How can we support FNS in that? I think that's the environment. And so Sarah and I have been working a lot with, how do we create an environment that when they get, kids get into the cafeteria, they feel like it's, it's an enjoyable envi- enjoyable environment to eat in, it's a great atmosphere and how does that complement the food that Sarah's serving on the menus there? So a good example of that is Laurel and Comas. We just renovated the lines there. I think you'll see, we tried to do a lot of things in that, that line area as students approach where they, where they get their food to make exciting about, about being in that line and what's on the menu today. So with that, let me turn it over to Sarah.
Okay. Yeah, if you get an opportunity to come and serve lunch at Laurel and Comas, it's absolutely beautiful. Kitchen facility was over 30 years old and it looked like it. And when Superintendent Connor came on board, we had a discussion and he challenged me to make our eating environments look and feel where students are engaged and it's part of the learning environment. So we've been really trying to move that initiative forward. Obviously, Northport High Cafeteria, that is another situation where we have a really outdated facility that needs updating, testing new menu items, just some things that we've done this year. We, and you remember this, Ms. Marinelli, are, we were kind of known for our macaroni and cheese and when the, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act came along with the whole grain, we couldn't find a consistent product. Well, we decided that we were gonna, we were gonna challenge accepted. And so we brought back our scratch mac and cheese this year. It's a much more beautiful product. It's the right color. We were like, no, mac and cheese should not look like that. And it doesn't look like Kraft either, so that's not good. Some other things that we brought in because students are seeing that out when they dine with their parents or out at, or even seeing it at home, we introduced a brioche bun, a whole-grain brioche bun. It is amazing. That was as a result of, we've had some students tell us our bread was mid. We're working with bringing back some of, in the past, we were able to bring in local, locally grown corn, green beans. As many of you know, our milk is actually produced in Hillsborough County. Those cows live there and are treated very well. So we're just really trying to engage our staff to know that our students can eat somewhere else. They can bring their own food. We don't want them to do that. We want them to dine and have the best experience so they're fueled up, ready to learn. And in the future, I know that Booker Middle School and Sarasota Middle are scheduled for remodels because again, those, those serving lines are over 30 years old.
Well, I can tell you from Parkwood Heights Elementary School, and I remember my lunch experiences when I walk around the schools today and I mean, it's, well, I can remember they just used to slop it on there, slop it on there and you got what, you get what you get, you don't pitch a fit. That's what, you got it and you went on. Now they have choices. I think that's awesome. I know there's a lot, that was 24 initiatives, but all of our initiatives, we're in, either complete or in progress and, and working towards getting better. Like I said, in ops, it's always in progress. It's always a work of improvement, you know, what can we do to get better? I don't think anybody, any, any of the vertical leaders, anybody that we have is satisfied with where we are. You know, we, we need to get better and we can't rest, and we can't, when something works, that's great, but we got to continue to work on what's not working right, whether that's support, whether that's speed, when time of delivery, whether it's quality, whether it's providing options. That's the challenge that I've given our team to how, how can we operate better as a team so ultimately we can impact children and ultimately give, be, provide a better experience across the road. I'm excited about Studer, Mr. Edwards, and the organizational excellence work, rolling out beyond ops and moving into front lines at schools and, and that, that's in the plan and in the structure moving forward. But with that said, we'll take questions for everything works, every student, every day.
Ms. Sigler, please.
Thank you. Great presentation. I do think you hit on something that maybe not is always recognized by people across the community, but the enterprise is massive. It's huge, but it's all done to support the education and the learning. So anytime there's an opportunity for people to do the behind-the-scenes tours, I highly recommend it because you're, my mind is, it's fantastic. But there are a lot of updates that I was very excited to hear about, particularly on the transportation piece, about the notifications. I, I, there's a lot of greatness in here. I know we're a little bit over on time, so I don't want to, I'm going to go fast, but I wanted to highlight that I think you guys are doing great. And I know Sarah has, and her entire team are so passionate and you're so loving and happy and just great to be around and I just get good vibes and I love it. So I love the work that you do and I know as we continue forward, you've always wanted to do healthy whole foods. That's always been a priority. Obviously, there's a financial limitation to that, but I think as we prioritize healthy students and trying to create more opportunities for that, I look forward for those conversations in the future. But I wanted to ask on the Studer Group and, and Dr. Kemp, you alluded to this at the very end, so, but is similar to the surveys of our staff, and the way surveys are done is science, right? I don't know if they're open-ended, but I love that we're hearing from, you know, from an evaluation piece, but also to hear back, feedback from our staff. But to the superintendent, similar to our desire to have a survey from any members of staff that leave us, I would, I'd like to challenge us to do the same with any families that leave us. So we are, because I think that there are miss, we, I think there's a lot of opportunity to learn there. I think there's a lot of, and again, we can't require it, but it's kind of like when someone wants to make a complaint, they're more inclined to do that versus tell you how great you are. So we might as well seize upon that kind of psychology and see if we, so I don't know if the Studer Group is the right vehicle for that. It sounds like they're doing a lot of surveys. I think, I just didn't, I was going to actually say this for my comments, but I came up with, with, I mean, at the end of the day. But I would like to see that opportunity and if they are the vehicle, I don't know if they're offering open-ended. I know we do our climate surveys. I mean, something different than that because I, we want, I mean, the most authentic feedback doesn't always mean it's, it doesn't always mean it's right, but we, I think we're, we can read through that and, and for both, I know we've talked about this for any members of staff that leave us, but I'd also like to extend that to any families that leave us because I think it'll give us good information. So with that, you guys are fantastic. Thank you for everything you guys do. I know that, I don't know, Dr. Kemp, you have all these little idiom statements that I totally butcher, so I'm not going to try, but you do say we can do everything but not, what is it? See?
Do anything, but you can't do everything.
Thank you.
We can't do everything.
And, and I appreciate that because I think that we, you know, hearing a lot of different improvements. I know there are many, but, and I think asset preservation is a, is a very, very important piece that I know our district has done a really good job and you go to other districts that, we are so much, we're light years ahead, but I understand financially, we have to be very, very tight and focused. So I know that we'll be coming forward with the CIP, but thank you for all the work that you guys do.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Thanks. I think I might've been misunderstood when I talked about the Studer Group because I still had other questions about the first eight, so here they go. The white fleet, I, as I recall, the presentation to us as board members did not project a savings. It projected a redeployment of dollars to make things more efficient. I would be curious, because I also believe that the process takes four years to be completely transitioned. So I would be curious and doesn't have to happen today, but first year, second year, third year, so that, so the board can see the, the process also so that new board members, when, when it comes on, when it happens, they're not, you know, it doesn't drop from the sky, it makes some sort of sense. I also, what I love about the concept is the buses are our priorities, are the white fleet wasn't so much, and so partnering with an outside entity that, so we focus on our core business and can partner more effectively with a outside partner, I think makes a lot of sense and will, in my opinion, will probably lead the trend of things as long as people don't lose their jobs. That was the very first question that I had when we were talking about who's losing their job. No, we're going to redeploy those, those maintenance workers into buses. Every, you know, all that was, so my point is, is that I'm asking for that so that it will be a marker for how we examine outside processes in the future. Lastly, I really do want to talk about impact fees for a moment. I'm grateful that the board back in 2022 agreed to the 50%, which was the highest we could ask for at the time. But my understanding is that there is a legal process that can happen that would allow us as a board to appeal or to apply for a higher than 50%. I'd like to reexamine that. I'm not of the camp that we pay for it one way or another. I'm from the camp that developers are developing here in Sarasota because this is the best school district in the state and so they get to sell their wares because of all of what we do and they should be responsible for helping build for that growth. Before you tell me that process, I know it's geared to match-only growth. What I did hear the other day, which I think makes a lot of sense, instead of building schools and going into that expense, we'd be looking at adding wings and different, is adding a wing dedicated to growth and would it come from an impact fee?
Yeah, so anytime you're expanding capacity over what you currently have in permanent buildings, you can use impact fee dollars to do that. So an example, the funding, the funding makeup for Northport High, the HVAC project, the portion that will be the new wing that we're planning to put in there is all impact fees funded. So yes, anytime you're expanding capacity, you can use impact fees to do that.
Okay, and then the process by which we can ask for, when, when does, I know there's a time period and what is that process?
So the state statute would require a demonstrated need study justifying any increase in excess of the maximum allowable, and this would have to be completed within 12 months before adoption of the impact fee increase. And it would need to express, I'm sorry, I'm going to read this from statute, expressly demonstrates the extraordinary circumstances necessitating, necessitating the need to exceed the phased-in limitations.
Well, it would seem to me that.
Well, it would seem to me that we have that argument. I'm not going to sit here and, and, but I would implore the board, my fellow colleagues, to talk about doing that because being way at the bottom of the list and the fact that we have incurred enormous expense in two schools that have, you know, the growth pieces that we built upon or we went to build those schools are not necessarily coming through as quickly and as fast as we would like. So I, I really think that this is something the board should want to take up in a workshop, understand all of the parameters that are connected to it. I for one, think it's imperative, especially as we're dealing with budget numbers that are, and our capital improvement plan increase the cost of construction, the fact that we're a coastal community. I mean, I could rattle this off. I just think we should examine going down that process and asking for greater than the 50%.
Superintendent Connor?
We will be bringing a proposal at our next board meeting. If you want me to table that for a workshop, we can, or we can just bring, bring forth, depending on the direction of the board. But we will have an impact fee study proposal for your approval on the next board meeting.
And would that include the option of going through the process of asking for more than 50%?
I'm going to get with legal counsel on, on that to make, to see what we're, what we have the ability to do in terms of that. But I would, I would suggest that we do the maximum allowable, you know, whatever that is.
I'm suggesting that we do more than the maximum allowable. There is a process statutorily correct that we can ask for more than the maximum allowable. And that's what I'm asking the board to explore.
So I think that first step would be approval of the contract to get the consultant in place, right? So I think if you move forward with that approval on your next board meeting, that'll start the conversation about what does it take to do that? And is it feasible for us or not? That may drive a workshop earlier than normal to say, what does the board want to do? But I think that would be first step, number one. And then number two, I know there are some districts that have tried this. And so conversations with our consultant about, were they successful? Were they not? And what pitfalls did they run into will be kind of key right, right away. So I think approval of the contract and then we can get into that conversation about, does it look like we can do it? And does the board want us to move in that direction?
I don't think, just to add, I don't think we have a choice. I don't think we have a choice. I think we need to look at leveraging everything we can to bring in the revenue we need to help offset the growth. And that includes the strategies that we set as a team and as a board, whether that's expanding core capacity in cafeterias, looking at classroom additions, slowing down on new builds and making sure that that's, I mean, we, we're not in a position anymore. We used to be, but we're not in a position anymore to be able to build 200, $225 million high schools and a hundred and, you know, $130 million high school three miles apart from another one. We have to be very strategic in how we, we use our, how we manage our debt service for new projects moving forward. That impacts everything else. Mr. Edwards is spot on. And I do think we need to maximize every available revenue dollar we can to ensure that, you know, the CFO, that we can do our job. Sometimes it's CF no, and sometimes it's a CF whoa. And this is one of those times where we have to whoa on projects. And you'll see that when we bring the CIP to you, you're going to see, man, there's like three made, three projects, three big projects while we're undergoing building for growth. We have to be strategic and smart. We have to be able to execute the visions that you set with the superintendent and us. We have to execute that because, you know, vision without implementation is hallucination. So we have to be able to execute what we get done.
Well, if the superintendent for Mr. Edwards, if you go ahead and look into that and then you can let us know whether or not we should go forward with it on the 20th or whether or not it needs to be a workshop. I think, I think we're all in agreement that at least we should look at the structure of it to see. Yeah, I think we're in good shape with moving forward with the contract to get the study done. And then while that simultaneously is going on, we can analyze and maybe bring a workshop item to talk about the findings of that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barker?
Busing is near and dear to my heart, obviously. So thank you so, so much for the updates that are coming down the pike with the Tyler Technologies. To be clear, we, we are stuck with where's the bus for one more year. Okay, okay, yes.
Yes, one more, one more year.
Okay, we'll power through it. And then the other thing I wanted to throw out there is, and I only know this because I have an incoming ninth grader at Pineview. We don't have a high school bus for our Pineview students. And that works fine for my family. We're a two parent family, but I wonder if that makes it more difficult for some of our students who don't have a two parent family or whose parents can't afford to buy them a car? And are, are those students missing out on the opportunity to attend Pineview because we don't have a high school bus? Is that something that we could look at in the future? Even if we have like a North County pickup or, or a South County pickup? You know, I, I don't know, but I, I wonder if we're, if some students are getting shortchanged by that lack of a bus.
And that's a great question. I think that in, in the next year to 18 months, we're looking at several variables that could impact that. The, the school start time change legislation and, and that, that is scheduled for 26, 27 school year, that, that could have impact depending on what direction the board chooses to go, that, that allocation of our resources. We've submitted to the superintendent several scenarios, some of which may have an opportunity for something like that. But it really comes down to the allocation of the resources that we have and, and the timeframes that those resources are being asked to be allocated. If you have a heavy load timeframe, it makes it more difficult without having more resources. Certainly if we have availability at other times, those are things that we always are going to look at as we continue to try to optimize our ridership, right? And, and maximize the, the amount of students that are on a bus at a time. That's something that may free up some resources down the road that we can look at. What are the results of those efforts? And is that an opportunity for that? So I'm never in an opportunity to say no, but our, our data is going to drive where we are that. And, and some of the several decisions that are going to come up in the next year or so may have an impact on it as well. Our direction every day is to try to eliminate excuses for why something can't happen, right? We try to find our way to yes, but try to, you know, Mr. Connor and Mr. Day make it really clear that we try to, we want to eliminate excuses for why students aren't coming to Sarasota County or make, we want to make it easier for families where we can, when we can.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. And particularly those students who may not have an opportunity otherwise or may not be set up for success in their family life, I'd just see them have that. So wherever we can do that. Oh, and Ms. Dan, your pie stickers are delicious. So good, so, so good. If you've been working the book fair all day long and you're starving, oh, chef's kiss. And also the Friday ice cream, very popular. So love what you're doing. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Marinelli?
I have a question on our electric buses. Can you just give a little summary of how they're working, how they stay charged? You know, just the whole, since this, we have almost a school year with electric buses.
Yeah, so just from an update all the way overall, we, in February, I think, is where, not February of 2025, but February of 2024, is when we were actually able to put the buses to the chargers and that project was completed. We spent the remainder of that year just testing our capabilities, right? To make sure that when we put them on the road, we weren't going to ask them to do something. We were having to drive a tow truck out to pull them back because we ran out of charge. Currently, we're, we're in the process, we have three that, that we put into service. Unfortunately, one had a battery issue, has been out of service for a while. Finally got it back on. We have three more that we were just receiving. Right now, what we're doing is we're in the process of really looking at what does that data look like over the next year to two, to compare that to our diesel buses and see where we're really at and what the feasibility of continuing that program or, or even expanding would be based on that data.
Well, thank you because I'd be very curious, see how financially that all works and how the batteries really function. Because you hear a lot of things and I just, I'd like to be updated with that, that, you know, as long as my fellow board members would like. So then, Mrs. Dan, I think I, you, I was reading on the presentation, you're, you're testing new items, so I think that's good. But I really like increasing the scratch cooking because, you know, every, every school always identified with having a scratch, whether it was the cowboy bread that lady made at Alta Vista compared to all, so I think that is a draw because as much as you can make, and I think kids, you can always tell what kids really like. And so I'm really glad you're getting back to the scratch cooking. And I know years ago, and I don't know if that's feasible, but at Southside, we, if we got the order in right away, the, the teachers, the adults, we would have salads made for us. And we really liked that. And then when that went away, it was kind of like, well, you know. So anyway, just something that may be down the road. I don't know if that's still.
Yeah, we, hold for cheesy rice. Um, yes, that's Dr. Kemp's request. We actually, in some locations, we are able to provide that for our adult customers. We just constantly are looking at ways, you know, obviously with COVID, some things had to change. Now we're in the process of moving back and, you know, just looking at, you know, always trying to manage guidelines, what's coming, what's changing and, and what's feasible. But absolutely, we do have some programs that are still providing those options for our, our adult customers as well as most of our high schools have, have beautiful salad bars where adults can come through the line.
Well, and you know, you can have all the guidelines, but the food's not good. Nobody will eat it.
Yes, absolutely.
So, and you know, sometimes those scratch meals might have a few ingredients that some might not find good, but they make good food. So it's like, and, and I like that you're going to conduct the food tasting. So I am so glad to see us getting away and quit using COVID, that we're getting back to normal. And food is a big normal for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
So in reference to the customer service, Dr. Kemp, I know when I first met you, that was one of the things of the highest priority years. And you, you talk to talk and you walk the walk. I've seen it in action many, many times. I see your staff taking over Dr. Little to transportation. I know that's been stuff and Jody going back and doing the facilities things. I've seen a whole different change in that and the way that things are managed in the business with the people that are on campus that are quickly respond. I just think that's awesome and my hat's off to you. I do have a couple of quick questions for Sarah Dan. So Sarah Dan, let's, just yes or no questions, answers, please. Nachos?
Yes.
Still?
Absolutely.
Corn dogs?
That's a, that's a crowd, that's a district favorite.
Yes, well, we could talk about the cheese later because it doesn't melt. Corn dogs?
Yes.
Corn dogs still? Pizza?
Yes, students love it.
Tacos and burritos?
Students love those, those are popular.
All right, I just wanted to clarify because the healthy stuff, not so much.
Well, as, as many.
Yes, thank you for the, thank you, Dr. Kemp, thank you.
As, as you know, a lot of ours are made, we modify ingredients so that we meet the guidelines. That's the challenge. You can have the most healthiest food, but if it doesn't, if it goes in a trash can and is not going into a student body, we've not accomplished anything. So we really work to try to marry all of that.
Listen, you do a great job there. You do a great job. I did say, once I did get yelled at at the cafeteria line when I was a captain of the sheriff's office, I gave some skinny kid at Pineview six tater tots and I was quickly corrected, five only. Quickly corrected. I, I couldn't, I couldn't control myself because he was so skinny. I put it anyway. That being said, we'll have the superintendent and then we're going to go ahead and we're going to take a break. Superintendent Connor?
Yeah, I just want to close out. Great presentation on where we're at in progress. Dr. Kemp, you said it right. We're never arriving. We're always working to get better. And I can't tell you how proud I am of this team because they are so behind the scenes. We talk about academic, that's our core mission. But like you said, if things aren't working, then kids can't learn. And it's like that stool, right? Running an organization such as a school system is like a three legged stool. And if you don't have that operational leg working properly, it just tumbles. And I'm just, I appreciate whatever, all you do. I will put our operations team against any, I've worked in a few districts now and I can say this from experience. We have some phenomenal, outstanding rock stars in operations. So thank you for what you do each and every day. And I look forward to us getting better every single day. Thank you so much.
You did a great, great job as always, all the people. Let's go ahead and come back at 20 till, so give us 15 minutes.
The board workshop is back in session. Superintendent Connor, please.
Thank you. We're going to move on with our last item, and this will be an update to the strategic plan, pillar two, mainly focused on our student support services team, who are all coordinated in their pink today. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Rachel O'Day to introduce the team and to provide an update on this very important pillar.
Yes, good morning. We do have a pretty in pink team and nice and robust here to share with you updates. Just one thing to be aware of. We obviously also have a very robust ESC programmatic review that we're implementing. You're going to see some slides throughout the section in which Dr. Wasserman is presenting that will have an indicator there showing you that that's also aligned to our ESC program review. However, that section isn't focused on that. It's focused on the strategic plan. And in some cases, they do converge. But later on in the summer, we will be able to present with you a full update on the programmatic review, where we are and what is left, which is very, very minimal. So that's exciting. But we will start with Ms. Tracy Cardenas, who is our Director of Early Childhood. And then we will have Ms. Deb Jackalone, who is our Executive Director of Student Support Services. And then Dr. Wasserman, who is our Executive Director for Exceptional Student Education, followed by Dr. Clayton, who is our Director of Academic Intervention Programs. And then you will hear from Dr. Hutchinson, who is our Chief of Student Support Services, leading this wonderful team today.
Well, thank you so much, Superintendent and Board. We are really excited to be here today, to get an opportunity to share with you just kind of the intentional and very collaborative work that has taken place within our number of, in our teams over the course of this year in support of our strategic plan. And so while most of what you're going to hear today does touch on pillar two, every student supported, we are going to dip our toe in a little bit with pillar one as well, with every student achieves, and just very excited to be able to offer and share with you just the really great work that has taken place. And you're going to hear some themes throughout the day today. And so we're going to start with early learning and continue on to student services, ESC, and then our academic intervention programs. But what you're going to hear, and what I'd like to draw to your attention, really is this theme of interconnectedness in support of our students and our families. And you'll hear how our teams are really working together to provide that very comprehensive support to all of our students, all of our staff, and all of our families. And so we are excited. We are the one team that supports students ages three through 22. And so we're going to kick it off with early learning and talking about our youngest learners with our director, Ms. Tracy Cardenas. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that introduction, Dr. Hutchinson. And I'd just like to start by saying how happy and grateful I am to be the first presenter on the team, sharing with you today some of our important work, specifically focused on our earliest learners. So on this first slide, I'm calling to attention the transition of our grant-funded general education and ESC blended programs to offer voluntary pre-kindergarten, or VPK. We worked really seamlessly with lots of departments, and especially with our finance department, to explore new funding sources for expansion. We were able to successfully convert 15 general education programs to offer VPK, joining 62 other school districts across the state of Florida in this effort. We added an additional five VPK classrooms at Atwater, Inglewood, Glen Allen, and Toledo Blade, for a total of 19 VPK programs last year, which is really an important celebration to offer so many new programs simultaneously. We also added a tiered payment portion for families to be able to participate in extended day programming options. And then over to the right on this slide, you'll see the total enrollment that we had this past school year, coupled with the number that's enrolled in extended day. One of the things that we needed to do is, to get started in this, is collect and maintain baseline data on preschool-aged children, ensuring comprehensive demographic records to inform program development and accessibility. We were not doing this in isolation. We worked very closely with our Sarasota Early Learning Coalition partners to really assess what was happening throughout our community and where these opportunities could present themselves. We focused specifically in on our Title I schools, where we were already offering early learning program, programs through the grant-funded opportunities provided to us through ESAR. And then we made sure that we adhered to a process that was approved by the Early Learning Coalition in reviewing VPK applications, following similar processes to, say, a school choice, where parents would provide application and then through a window, and then we would review priority considerations that you see here on this slide. The other thing we did and we're so grateful for is our student services team members, particularly at our Title I schools, who helped to increase community awareness of these programs and worked with their school-based communities to make sure that families were aware of these options. On this slide, you'll see that we were able to annually increase available VPK programs. There's a little bar graph on the side that kind of shows you, well, it does show you, how each year we were able to add to our programs, not only for VPK, but providing for students with disabilities, the opportunity to participate in ESC programming options. We collaborated very closely within our department with the ESC and Student Services side of the house to make sure that appropriate support was in place, either through staffing our clinics with additional nurse or clinic aid support, or working with the ESC teams to make sure that speech and language pathologists would be available for these youngest children. In 2627, we are looking at continuing to expand VPK availability with a new celebration at Sky Ranch. So we will have a VPK program available there, as well as an ESC preschool program available for students ages three, four, and five. So all of you have heard, I think, in the presentation before about the importance of professional learning. One of the things that goes hand in hand with expanding anything that we're doing and really focusing in on establishing a solid foundation with our earliest learners is ensuring and committing to ongoing professional learning and support. If you look at the top part, it talks about our VPK instructors. We had 100% of our instructors trained in FAST Star Early Literacy. VPK has joined K through 12. VPK has joined K through 12 in FAST through the provision of that Star Early Literacy and that participation in that. 100% of our VPK instructors met those associated training requirements, a standards course, and 15 hours of literacy course instruction prior to beginning the school year. 100% of our VPK programs passed the required class observation provided through the Children's Forum, and 100% of our VPK teachers participated in professional learning opportunities that were provided throughout the year. For all of our preschool educators, including preschool educators that serve ESC programs, we had 100% participate in required and ongoing progress monitoring with the Brigance Inventory of Early Development. 69% of all of our pre-K teachers participated in the Pre-Source Week Training Opportunities. And for those pre-kindergarten teachers who were unable to attend, we had early learning department team members who were able to go out and provide one-to-one support out at the school sites. For 98% of all of our preschool teachers, attended 45-plus professional learning opportunities provided throughout the year for pre-K. We invite our community partners at times to participate as space will allow, so that we're ensuring that that professional learning is aligned with best practice and that we're all on the same page in what a high-quality preschool classroom should look like. 85% of our pre-K teachers participated in what we are calling pre-K Teacher Leader Cohorts, driven by what do pre-K teachers want and need in terms of professional learning and Many of you realize, but maybe some out in the community may not, we require ongoing progress monitoring for our littles, three, four, and five. Indeed, that's best practice for any age group, even ourselves, right? So we make sure that all of our teachers are trained in progress monitoring, not only in how to implement progress monitoring, but how to use that information to inform instructional decision-making. So whether it's adhering to utilizing the Brigance Inventory for Early Development to inform entry child outcome summary processes and exit child outcome summary processes, informing our ESC data that's reported to the state, and also ensuring that we're meeting the needs of the populations, we're also ensuring that we're utilizing FAST Star Early Literacy results to inform instruction after every progress monitoring period. For 2324 cohort, it's just really important for everyone to understand, because those were early learning programs, those classrooms did not participate in Star Early Literacy last year. Rather, all of those students were progress monitoring using the Brigance Inventory of Early Learning, because we weren't yet offering voluntary pre-kindergarten programs. The celebration comes that that particular cohort for PM1 FAST Progress Monitoring outperformed all learners at the beginning of the year in kindergarten. And so I think that's something that's really a celebration on our investment in early learning programs. I think it would be very difficult for anyone to argue that the return on investment in early learning programs far outpaces many other early intervening programs. So I appreciate that our district invested in that. We are on track for 2425 school year to have 100% participation in Star Early Literacy and monitoring through the Brigance, and 100% of our students participating in VPK are in the process of completing FAST Star Early Literacy for PM3, which will be really helpful as we move forward in these programs. I would be remiss if I didn't celebrate our, and this is indicated as in progress, and that's only because this is something that we continually do annually. We have to count on our community partnerships when we look at early learning, because a lot of our community providers are responsible for incoming kindergarteners. I serve on the Early Learning Coalition of Sarasota as a board member, regularly as a representative of Sarasota County Schools, attending those meetings. We engage in monthly and quarterly community and inter-agency meetings with agencies like the Gulf Coast Early Steps. We work with the ELC to make sure that we are coordinating the class observation for our VPK teachers. We obviously regularly and almost even on a monthly basis are collaborating with Children First, which is our local early Head Start and Head Start grantee. We're one of the founding partners for the First 1,000 Days Suncoast Initiative and through the Remake Learning Days partnership through the Patterson Foundation. We just, last week, had two Remake Learning Days K-Riser events, which were amazing and very well-attended, with over 200 participants in North County and I think approximately 150 participants. I don't have the exact numbers yet, but I just want to commend all of our elementary school principals and teams for having a table there, welcoming our community to our schools, and advertising what we do collaboratively. We also had some other community partners there, supporting our district's earliest learners and families. It would go, it goes without saying that not only are we blessed as the Early Learning Office to work with this amazing Student Support Services Department, but we also work very, very closely with our elementary, middle, and high school teams in ensuring that we are providing early learning programming that's in alignment with what's going to follow next, right? And this comes to here. What happens between pre-K and kindergarten? Well, we have a pre-K to K community transition plan that we work with, with some of the partners aforementioned, as well as with our elementary curriculum members, to ensure that what we're doing is helping families to understand the importance of what they do at home in helping their child be ready as they enter into kindergarten. We have refined and improved the transition planning process from pre-K to K to support student readiness and engagement, and we ongoing provide an Early Learning Coalition Transition Checklist that's provided to us through partnership with the Early Learning Coalition and is help distributed with the support from the Student Support Services team members, our school counselors who work with their administrative teams, and kindergarten teachers in receiving that information. So at the bottom, you'll see that this 2024 Kindergarteners Readiness Data, that reflects all pre-K students throughout our community, not just the ones that are participating in our programs, but the ones that are in community providers. So if you notice that bottom piece, 68% in 2024 of Sarasota VPK completers entered Ready for Kindergarten, which, that shows that we have room to go, although it's a 4% increase from the previous year. That's compared with an overall kindergarten readiness rate of 57%. So highlighting the reason why it's so critical that all of us embrace what's happening with our community, with our parents and families, increasing parent and family engagement, and really doubling down on those community partnerships, so that we can maximize opportunity for our students and families to enter, have their students enter kindergarten-ready. And finally, in any presentation that I provide, and I've heard some of you as well, we have to keep in mind that 90% of brain development occurs before the age five or entry into kindergarten. So I'm just going to go back to what I was mentioning earlier in the fact that whatever we invest in our early learning programs, not only within our district, but in supporting what the community is trying to do as well, we win. And not only do we win, our students win, and our families win, and our community wins. So your support of early learning is really, really important, and part of the reason why I was so happy and grateful to be here in front of you today. The only last thing I would like to say, as we look at what Dr. Clayton's department is working on, is if we invest in early learning, and I know that she's going to get to some major celebrations later on when she presents, is that participation in early childhood experiences, childcare, preschool, high quality in particular, increases high school graduation rates. And I know she's got some celebrations, so I'm glad I was able to be the first one. So without ado, I'm going to pass my clicker over here to my colleague.
All right. Thanks, Tracy. And thank you for the work that your team has done to help foster the relationship with the Student Services Team. So when we presented in the fall, we talked to you a little bit about our attendance, our behavior, and our resiliency pillars. We promised to come back in the spring and talk to you a little bit more about our school health team and our mental health services team, our initiatives, and the great work that our team is doing. May is a super-important month for the Student Services Team. We have a lot of awareness and celebration events. The first one that I'm going to highlight today is, this is Nurses Week. So I would love to thank our school health teams that are out there taking care of our students and keeping them healthy every day, and to introduce one of our members of our team, Ms. Suzie DeBeauz, who is our school health supervisor. She is going to share some highlights, and just, I think you all are going to be mind-blown with some of the data that she shares that are happening in our schools every day. So without further ado, Ms. Suzie DeBeauz.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Thank you. Wow. Teamwork makes the dream work. Nice. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon. Hello. Nice to see some of you again. It's been a while since I've been here. Happy to be back in the pink jacket. But on behalf of the school health team, I'd like to thank you for your time, for the opportunity to provide an update. Got some good data to share. You can see from the screen, we take our work very responsibly, importantly, show up every day, because our job is to promote and protect the health, the safety, and the well-being of our kids. It's a big job, but we've got this. Before I share that data, let me go ahead and introduce you to the team. We've got registered nurses, RNs, that provide oversight to licensed practical nurses that also work with unlicensed staff, all one big happy team. You'll see that we have a great relationship with Department of Health, and I always say it doesn't matter who pays your paycheck. We all work toward the same goal in protecting our kids and their health. Those RNs actually provide oversight to the LPNs, and not only that, they do all the care plans, the emergency care plans. They go to 504 accommodation meetings. They go to the IEP, the Individual Educational Meetings, because a lot of our kids have a health component that we need to work as a team to support. Licensed practical nurses came into the district a couple of years ago while I was here. As our unlicensed staff moved on, retired, resigned, moved on, we filled them with a license. It provides additional clinical skills and healthcare knowledge that has proven to be very beneficial. We still have our clinic aides. We love them. They belong to the school sites, and they are working just as hard and long as we are to make sure that our kids are supported and back to class. There's that DOH component that we discussed briefly. DOH provides supervisory support. They provide educational support through health educators, and their clerks actually really support those state-mandated screenings and immunizations that we talk about on an annual basis, making sure our kids are ready and prepared for school. This is one of my favorite slides. As you can see, we don't do ice packs and Band-Aids. We've got on every single line there an increase in complexity and high-risk conditions. On any given day, and on most days, we see those high-risk kids coming through the clinic. We're doing trakes. We're doing G-tube feeds. We're doing seizure control. We're providing all of those supports, so those kids can stay in the educational setting. Plans, medications, services, all have gone up 31.5%. So back to that slide briefly. Thank you, Deb. I'm sorry, I'm going a little off-script, so thanks for hanging with me. Diabetes, you can see, is pretty solid across the board, not huge numbers of increase there, but I can tell you that that diagnosis alone might find a student in the health room three to five times a day, because our littles and even our bigs, you know, nobody gets stressed or sick or wants to eat a cupcake on Cupcake Day. You know, we may be seeing this. So it's important that we have qualified people on campus to support. Okay. This is another of my favorite slides. We saw almost 300,000 students in the health room last year. That's a lot. Of that number, 35,000 actually went home or required care off-campus. That means that we are supporting those health needs at the school site, getting them back to class so that they can be productive and in the learning environment. One more shout-out to DOH and the partnership, not only with our Student Services Team, but with Department of Health. We are providing a lot of support in the schools. We do the school-wide screenings ourselves as a schools-wide team, but we also work with the state-run vision organization, HICAN, I think it's based out of Miami, to provide two weeks of screenings via a bus at different schools throughout the district. And we can move kids from schools to one certain location, so that we can really reach all of our schools. Again, optometrist provided, and they provide free glasses. This is important. I mean, that's necessary for kids to be able to see and learn, right? Our local health department provided dental exams and sealants to students in 11 elementary schools this year. That comes to 2,871 students. If dental decay or problems were identified, then they connect them to local resources. I've seen kids in school with swollen cheeks and in pain, and it's heartbreaking, so I'm so thankful for this program. They even said that whatever schools they didn't get to this year, they're willing to come back over the summer during our summer programs. So we'll be following up on that. And in addition to our vision and dental screenings, our DOH clerks coordinate and often provide those state-mandated screenings. We've got vision, hearing, scoliosis, and BMI, Body Mass Index. So that's a lot of work. In fact, I just received the numbers. I just have to share. It's a big one. 13,000 vision screenings, 9,600 hearing screenings, BMI 9,300, and scoliosis 3,500. That might be a little short between DOH and focus, but what it amounts to is 101% compliance with our district screenings. So we've seen all the kids we needed to see and some others that aren't in the mandated grades that say, "I can't see," or "I'm having trouble hearing." So those are pretty phenomenal numbers. So, in conclusion, school health is truly grateful that we're part of that Student Services Team, I've got my pink jacket back, working as a team to ensure student success during these unprecedented times. We'd also like to thank the Board and our Superintendent and all leadership for recognizing the comprehensive health needs of our kids, making the significant investment to make sure that we have appropriate staffing, and ensuring that our students and staff have the resources and training they need. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Suzie. It was great having that information. I know the Board appreciated hearing those school health updates. I am excited now, I said we have a lot of celebrations in the month of May. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, so this is a time that we celebrate and honor, raise awareness about what it means to be mentally healthy, especially when we talk about resiliency and well-being of our students. So today, we're going to give you some highlights on a few of our key priorities that align with Pillar Two of the Strategic Plan, every student being supported. We're going to share some very high-level overviews of the expansion of our Mental Health Services Team and what that looks like, some robust goals that we have moving into the 25, 26 school year. We want to highlight some of the great work we've done around our Student Services ratios. We've heard a lot about professional learning. We want to talk with you about those cadres of learners that we have in our department, how they're learning and how they're bringing that learning back to support their students and their families. Of course, one of the questions that always comes up is how do we sustain the work and build capacity? So you're going to hear a little bit about how we've designed our teams to work more efficiently in our schools. We are going to talk about our plans to expand the expertise of our teams. And then one of the most important themes, I think you heard it from Tracy, you're going to hear it from Heather, is how we continue to strengthen the partnerships with our community resources. So that's a look ahead. And before I start, I want to talk to you a little bit about our Student Services ratios. This is one area that I'm really proud of. I'm so thankful for our school board, who has been with us for many years as we've looked at our Mental Health Allocation Assistance Plan. You know that one of the most important factors that the state asks us to do is to really take a look at those Student Services ratios, so our numbers of school counselors, our numbers of school psychologists. So our numbers of school counselors, our numbers of school psychologists, our numbers of school social workers. And as you can see, each year, we have worked really hard to make improvements in those ratios. You hear that we've made improvement in ratios and you're wondering, what are we doing with all of these staff on campus? So it's more than just having more people on campus and more resources available for our students. It's about the intentionality of the work that we're able to do to support our students, one. And then, two, how do we continue to build the skills and the expertise of these professionals so that we can continue to reduce barriers, we can provide more direct services, and ultimately, we can have every student have a plan that they can access when they leave our doors? So at this time, I'm going to turn this part of the presentation over to Mandy Coker, our director, and Ms. Tara Allen, our administrator, who oversees some of our major programming.
Thanks, Deb. As Deb mentioned, we have done a great job, thank you, board, of consistently decreasing our ratios of our student support staff. And as ratios decrease and service providers increase, streamlining professional learning is an absolute must. Professional learning is a year-round commitment designed to build staff capacity, improve student outcomes, and ensure alignment with district priorities. This comprehensive framework promotes continuity and builds capacity across all student services teams. As an integrated student services team, we provide professional learning to our behavior coaches, our school counselors, our school psychologists, our school social workers, and our homeschool liaisons. And this work is done strategically to align efforts to support students in our schools. During this professional learning, these student services cadres are provided professional learning designed for their specific roles. So for example, our behavior coaches received the Eight Essentials for Classroom Management, which then they go back to their schools to build capacity to instruct their instructional staff on, as well as our school-based mental health service providers who receive professional learning such as solution-focused counseling strategies. These professional learning sessions also include time to dig deep into data at specific school levels and problem-solved best practices among each other. Because of the decrease in ratios and the increase in professional learning, it allows our teams to provide an increase in evidence-based direct student supports. So we want to take a moment and just give a shout-out to all of our Student Support Services staff members. We look at as of April twenty-fifth, almost thirty-five hundred direct student and family interventions have been provided by the Student Services Team to our students and families. Our professional learning is not just a sit-and-get. We recognize that it's the application that counts, and the application is provided to our students. As we look over the different services and the level of highlight, Dr. Wasserman is going to be talking to you more about our integrated partnership between Student Services and the Office of ESE. So I just want to take a moment to point out where you see CARs. CARs is Counseling as a Related Service. CARs is provided to our students with disabilities and students who have a 504 when a direct need is identified through an IEP or a 504 plan. Another intervention that I'd love to highlight for you guys on there is our attendance. Over thirteen hundred attendance interventions have been provided to our students and families this year. We know when students aren't on campus, they're not learning. So these interventions can look like home visits by our social workers, identifying barriers that preventing them to come to school, or maybe establishing a check-in, check-out with a trusted adult on campus to help increase that level of engagement. I'm going to turn this over to Tara to talk to us a little bit more about our proactive behavior response team.
All right. Thanks to support from our fabulous school board, our district proactive behavior response team this year provided eight hundred and five days of support to students, to one hundred and twelve students thus far in the school year. Those are students who are exhibiting the most significant externalizing or problem behavior in our classrooms. Our team also provided professional learning to our building behavior coaches and focused on implementing the behavior relaunch that we worked really hard on this year for all things behavior intervention. As we gathered survey feedback throughout the first semester from coaches and analyzed the behavior data trends in our schools, we created a district work group in January to design enhancements to the behavior program and respond to the needs that are identified in our buildings and by the district team. We quickly realized that our district behavior intervention services must be designed in sync with our mental health and other service partners in the community to adequately address the ever-changing needs and those behavior challenges that are impacting instruction and days of learning for our students. This brings us to our exciting launch of the new District Mental Health Team. As Dr. Hutchinson shared at our last school board meeting, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we will be adding five mental health professionals to our district team called M-HART or HART for Mental Health Resiliency Team. We have hired five talented school psychologists, and we are eager to welcome them to our department. We know this new and exciting integrative approach will allow our team to intervene proactively, especially as we consider the enhanced role of our seven homeschool liaisons during the next school year that will be integrated together into this team. The HART team will enhance service delivery and access to all students in Sarasota County schools. They will provide direct student supports and intervention to students grades K-12. They will provide onsite coaching, professional learning, and technical assistance in the schools to existing school-based mental health providers at all of the buildings. Our team will provide crisis response and support that's just in time. High-level students who have support monitoring plans, who have been involved in a behavioral threat assessment, will also receive this oversight from the team. We will also ensure all families and students are connected to those essential community mental health services and partners with follow-up supports provided at the school level every month. You may be wondering how we are going to support this enhanced student services team this next school year. There's four essential things that we plan to do. We're going to elevate professional learning for everybody included in this enhanced team. Professional learning for all, focused on innovation, leveraging community, and our university experts and partnerships we have. Using technology to streamline our work and allow optimal time for team members to be providing direct supports to students and families. We want to clarify and strengthen our student services roles. We want clear expectations. We'll make sure that those are ready this summer as we work in our summer work groups. Roles and responsibilities will be shared with all stakeholders. And we will work closely with our building, staff, and departments at the, at, here at the district to make sure that communication is consistent regarding the new staff roles and structures and how to access these enhancements in our department. We will make sure that fidelity and evidence-based practices is at the forefront. New systems and tools for fidelity, data collection, and intervention planning, as well as intervention tools, will be provided, especially as we enhance school-based mental health counseling and supports at all of the schools with all of the team and the district supports. And lastly, we're excited about our regional student services support structure. We're going to launch this next school year. We are going to have regional mental and behavioral health teams combining our current successes with the behavior, proactive behavior response teams and our new mental health team together into regions. We will have this integrated structure for behavior and mental health supports that truly reflects best practices in the field for behavior and mental health services in the schools. We're eager to share that sixty-five staff from our Student Services Team, including the seven homeschool liaisons who will be providing direct support to students in their seven Title I schools next year, were recently trained, twelve hours of professional learning by psychologist Dr. Shannon Seldow from USF, and have obtained certification in the Well-Being Promotion Program, which is an evidence-based mental health initiative for schools. Next year, our team will implement this well-being program in all Sarasota County schools as an evidence-based Tier Two intervention after obtaining parental consent. Next year, we will use the newly hired Mental Health Resiliency Team to provide more frequent consultation, customize professional learning to all school-based teams based on student and staff needs that are specific to the school. Our school psychologists have knowledge of school frameworks such as the multi-tiered systems of, of support, or MTSS. They are able to design student supports alongside teams for students who have unique disabilities and can provide that essential mental health counseling during the school day on campus, in addition to connecting students to those essential mental health resources in the community and services that our families need. We have a lot of great things in store for these district teams and our school-based teams alongside our inter-agency partners next school year.
We're just so proud of our Student Services Team members, both at the district level and on the school sites, and all the supports that they are providing, but would be remiss to not really talk a little bit about the impact that our agencies have on our students in our district. So when we have an inter-agency agreement, it's really important that the community is aware that there is no money exchanged between the district or an inter-agency partner, as well as the services that are provided from these agencies are at no cost to our families. So at the Semester One check-in with our agencies, seven hundred ninety-nine students have received mentoring supports from our inter-agencies through parental consent. So what mentoring looks like, it may be from big brother, big sister. It may be girls ain't coming on to campus. They're checking them with our students. They're working on goals that they work alongside the school with. They may be going out in the community and doing extracurricular activities alongside our students. In addition, during our Semester One meeting with our inter-agencies, two hundred seventy-nine students were receiving mental health therapeutic supports from our agencies. So those providers were either coming on to our campuses, providing those direct services on campus, working with the families for them to come on to their agency property, or meeting the families out into, into the community. This number does not include the Florida Center, two hundred-plus students that they have served for the therapeutic support. This is in addition for our Semester One therapy provided by our inter-agencies.
Thanks, guys. As you can tell, we have a lot of things that we are really proud of this coming year. There's a couple people that I want to thank that we, you heard from our operations team earlier today. And much of the work that we do could not take place without the consistent work of operations. So thank you, Dr. Kemp and your entire team. Our first shout-out goes to our IT team for helping us implement the Student Information System Focus. This tool has enabled us to have real-time data so our to, our teams can effectively problem-solve and make decisions to improve instructional outcomes for our students. Our IT team was also busy helping us launch Peer this year, which was our IEP and 504 platform that helps us efficiently write 504s and IEPs. I really want to take a moment to thank Mr. Connor and the entire board during really difficult times for prioritizing the improvement of our student services ratios everywhere, from our school nurses to our counselors, our homeschool liaison, our psychologists. It is really the foundation of support for helping our students achieve academically. We're excited about the professional learning that has taken place this year that's allowed us to provide more direct supports to our students than ever before. And we believe that the enhancements that we have made are going to, next year, we're going to probably have double what we shared with you this year. So we're excited about that expansion of the team. And lastly, and most importantly, that collaborative thread that we've heard so often today will continue to be enhanced throughout the years as a common thread of advancing outcomes district-wide. So thank you all for your time today, and thank you to all of our Student Support Team members that are in our schools supporting our students every day. So at this time, I'd like to turn the next portion of the presentation to Dr. Wasserman.
Yes, so before we do that, we do have two more presenters. We have Dr. Wasserman and then Dr. Clayton. Would you like to pause to discuss pre-K and Student Support Services questions before we move on?
Board members? Yes.
Okay. So we will take questions on the first two presentations at this time.
Ms. Barker, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Of course, Student Services is very near and dear to my heart, and I think it's an integral part of helping our students succeed. My question is, I got an email, and I know several other folks in the community did too, asking about whether there was interest in becoming a resiliency coach. And I was wondering how that fits in with our Student Services model. You know, particularly for the community, they want to know, who are these resiliency coaches? How did they get there? How are they trained? And how do we integrate them into what we're already doing?
Okay, so that's a different from this. That is that Florida Department of Education program that Dr. Harriet Moore spoke about for our volunteers, that if you want to volunteer, there is a formulaic format that we can use, and they can get trained to become resiliency coaches and support schools in that way. So that's different. Although what we're doing over here is a little bit more prescriptive due to medical needs, IEPs, or other things that have emerged based on mental health concerns, where that is coaching all students and being a mentor to all students, but within a framework that they, that the state's calling Resiliency Coach.
For the community, just to be very clear, the resiliency coaches do not fall under Student Services. They fall under our community outreach.
Right, it'd be strategic engagement with Dr. Moore, and it is a volunteer program. So just similarly to, if we're going to go read in schools, you're feeding, you know, reading competencies indirectly, and it's similarly to this where you're mentoring and supporting students to be resilient in, in their role as students in school. But not aligned to this.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. I'm always, when we get to these, every year, it's such a delight to see improvements from whence I got here. I know that Deb and I met each other for the first time wearing masks. We couldn't even see what each other looked like for probably a year or longer. So we've done a lot of great work in Student Services, and I love the combination of all of it together. It makes so much sense as it relates to supporting our students. So let me start with VPK. We have two hundred ninety-six folks enrolled, young folks enrolled, very young folks enrolled. What is, what's the, the goal? What, what, what do we want?
So I'm so glad you asked that. I think the goal of any school district and any community would be to work with parents, families, other community providers in a seamless way to ensure kindergarten readiness. And we're in fact doing that. By expanding into the VPK realm, we're joining districts and we're joining communities in providing high-quality educational programming aligned with the Florida Early Learning Developmental Standards, opening opportunities for conversations for us to engage with local community providers about what does this look like? Our Florida Department of Education and our Division of Early Learning is really doubling down and investing right now in early learning, particularly in VPK, because the results are showing us that students are entering more ready than ever before for kindergarten, with the hope that future, we get to a hundred percent of our pre-K kiddos entering kindergarten-ready. I mean, we wouldn't want not one little learner not to be ready. And so with the advent of FAST for VPK, we have an even larger opportunity now than we did before to look at programming and early intervention prior to them entering into kindergarten. So I think that, or I know that, our superintendent, Mr. Connor, whenever he came in and he was looking at every student achieves by putting as one of the first priorities that establishing a solid foundation, and with all of your approval here and your support, really doubling down on our investment in pre-K has really been something that has been noticed by our community members, that our community members have expressed gratitude for. And as we move forward, we continue to look at doing, and as Dr. Kemp says, and I can't remember his like little quote, "better all the time" or "greater." I don't know what he said, but something really cool to that effect.
I'll add a little bit to that. I think it's a continual conversation about, we have to do a comprehensive needs analysis, right? And what space is available within our, you know, portfolio of buildings where we can leverage community partners to expand? So I'll give you an example, looking at a new school, right? We're building Sky Ranch next year. That's an opportunity there where we're going to expand, and that makes sense for us. There's a need there. There's space there. We have, we're ready to do that. So the goal, yes, I believe theoretically, one hundred percent, practically, we'll look at all of those variables to see what we can control and finance.
Thank you. I was actually going to turn my head and ask that question to you, super. But if the goal is a hundred percent and VPK is supported by the state, correct? So that where we receive funds for that half-day, then it's really, in my mind, it becomes a capacity issue with the extent, with, without the, the staff connected? So staff, is that, is that still part of the allocation we get for VPK?
So the reason we leverage the blended VPK model is because it's advantageous for us financially as well, and, and it's good practice, right? You want kids to be in a, in a diverse setting like that. So yes, we look at those models to see, how can we do this on our shoestring budget that we have and taking all these funding and taking all these funding sources, like the state-funded VPK program, what we can get through the ESC funding, blending those pieces to maximize resources. So all of that's a part of the whole picture in determining how to stretch those dollars, because we do not get enough, I would say, I know Ms. Ziegler doesn't like "fully funded." She doesn't like that terminology. But we don't get all of the funds needed to operate that fully.
You guys are just answering the question so beautifully. I am so appreciative. And the braided model is the way to go. The extended stay is the charge that we came up with for parents to pay for the additional hours. How many hours are there additionally, and what is the cost?
So we worked with the Sarasota Early Learning Coalition, and we looked at funding throughout the state of Florida for other large districts when we considered extended day. And so what we do charge is in alignment with what other large districts are currently charging for extended day on a tiered model. So if you qualify for free lunch, then you have an opportunity to participate in free extended-day programming. Or if you qualify for reduced, you get a reduced fee, and then of course, everyone else pays the full fee. And that covers the second part of the day. Keeping in mind that VPK covers 540 hours, so that's typically in the morning from 8:30 to 11:30, and then the remainder of the day is what counts for extended day. And just as a point of clarification, when I talk about 100%, what I was talking about was looking as a community to 100% kindergarten readiness. You know, given what Mr. Connor was illustrating, it's really a funding challenge, right? Because we have to keep in mind fiscal responsibility when we're looking at programming, but we also don't want to dip our toes too deep into waters having a negative impact on local preschool community providers who may be counting also on those funding sources. And that's why I think in the early learning realm, those partnerships become even more critical.
Sure, I understand the balance with our early learning partners and not wanting to obviously put them out of business and to match those processes. But the data, and the reason why I am so, this is something I just recently campaigned on. And it really is, the data is, it speaks for itself. There's no reason not to be doing this 100% of the time, period, end of statement. So I saw that you had data numbers that talk about, I think it's 57% of all our students are K-ready. 68% of the kids that we took care of are K-ready. So my next question is, are we going to track those kids K-12? Are we going to follow them right through so that every year, the data is telling every parent, this cohort matters, this entry matters?
So I think that Ms. Jackalone, early on in her presentation, thanked the IT department, and I would be remiss if I didn't also thank them as well as our research assessment and evaluation team. We have had the opportunity to meet with both departments, and through FOCUS, we have the opportunity to track what we're calling cohorts. That's how I was able to talk about the PM1 FAST data for Star Literacy. We're already on track to continue to manage that. And we're going to count on our, not only our ESC office, but as well as other offices, and particularly our elementary curriculum teams, to continue to track how they're doing as they go from kindergarten to first grade, to second grade, to third grade. Because there's lots of things that need to also occur as they get to that third-grade level, to make sure that they're hitting that. And just, I commend the leadership of Ms. O'Day in that regard. I'm sure she has something to add to that.
Yeah, so FOCUS, as Tracy mentioned, does allow us to do different things with our data. It feeds the Performance Matters Platform, which then feeds reporting down to teachers, and you know, whether it's school-based or district-level leaders or staff. And similarly, what we do with student groups, right? We have different student groups that we track with for ethnicity or socioeconomic status. This kind of falls right into another student group that we can track. And because we're using VPK, and they're taking PM1, 2, and 3, then we are able to compare those apples-to-apples going up versus looking at a different assessment, and then it changing, and not having that apples-to-apples comparison through their pre-K-12 experience. So it'll be added to the student group during our updates that we give you three times a year for PM1, 2, and 3. You'll start seeing that data now going pre-K to 12 versus K to 12. So that's going to be a new experience, and something that we can track and share. The data that you were referencing, Mr. Edwards, was talking about all of Sarasota. Not, so we'd have to extract out, which we're going to do in our PM3 update to everyone in July. How did our VPK students do versus community providers and Sarasota County School District in one? We'll pull that out, because that is the group that we would also track.
So if I understood that correctly, the 100% of all providers was that 50% of all students, whether whoever, was kindergarten-ready. But our students were, 68% of our students were...
Anyone who attended a pre-K program.
Oh, okay.
So that could be community or school-based.
Okay. So have we tracked our students individually?
They're tracked within the pre-K cohort, but not community provider versus Sarasota County School District.
And remember, this is our first year with the VPK. So we'll have data at the end.
Okay, so the answer is, we'll have it in the future.
So in July, when we do the PM3 update, it'll be a part of the student group information. We can talk about students that specifically attended pre-K versus those that did not.
That's great. So I want to say thank you also to the IT department, but it's also just really trying to follow this thread, because we've, there's a lot of information coming at us in one day. So that's really why I'm asking those specific questions. Okay, I think I'm done with pre-K. I have, Ms. Dubois had, I love this chart of the trend of illnesses. Everything looks to me in order, or kind of like trending, except the others. The others are almost doubled, and it looks like it happened around COVID. And there's nothing in there that looks, are those just one-offs? The GI, the arthritis, eating disorder, well, eating disorder isn't a one-off. But I don't understand why the others catapulted so greatly. Everything else seems to be in alignment.
I thought it would take a number of years for the turnover, but we put a 20-something LPNs in right off the bat within the first couple of years. So whether it was heightened awareness of health and what's going on, or these new licenses coming into the school, we've definitely seen an increase. Absolutely, that's the 300,000 visits every year.
So if we can handle it now because of licensing, we do? Okay, so, all right, I'll take that. Here's where I'm going also now, and then I promise to be done. The changeover that we're doing with mental health support, and I know that Dr. Hutchinson had done a lot of explaining, but it's helpful here is this number, also on this chart, of 1,500 students needing mental health support. That's the first time it's ever been quantified for me. So in addition to the five mental health professionals that we're hiring and our outside agencies that we partner with, is that who we're servicing, the 1,500? Is that, is that the number?
Yeah, so when we look at, they're going to be looked at a little separately there. So when we talk about the students that we're going to be providing school-based mental health services to, those are kiddos that are demonstrating some type of difficulty need within the school setting, where they need that kind of counseling type of support. And it can come either from our student services team, it can come from one of our school counselors, or our regional mental health service providers. When we talk about kiddos that we're referring out to our inter-agency, they are looking at more therapeutic type of services that they're going to receive. Now, when we look at this particular chart, we could also have someone coming in, like, let's say we have a student who has an involuntary examination, where our, you know, when we're talking about developing a safety or health plan for them to come back into school, that our clinic staff is a part of that conversation. So it isn't necessarily that we have a total number of 1,500 that encompasses all of those. They really are looking at the specific needs of each individual child, and sometimes it may involve a health clinic to provide that support, and sometimes it may require that we have a comprehensive plan that also involves outside providers providing that support.
So what would be helpful to me is the arrangement that we had with the Florida Center. My understanding was that all those kids needed clinical support. Excuse me. So what I'm trying to get to is, can we have a, can we get a quantification year-over-year of students that require clinical support, whether that's through our own internal staff or an MOU with an outside agency? And then the number of students that need, I forget how you quantify it, they need just some sort of support that doesn't require clinical support, so that we, and then, and so what I'm trying to do is, from my perspective, get the costs associated with both of those groups, because in my conversation with Deb over the years is, where can we do better? Or where do we need additional funding to support all students' needs?
And we have that data every year as part of our mental health allocation plan. We're required to report to the state year after year, September 30th, how many students were referred, how many students engaged in therapeutic services, and how many students completed that. So we have that data. We will be able to share that. What is new this year is we've actually started working more closely with our inter-agency partners. So that's how we were able to get that number 279. We know exactly what students are receiving that clinical support from outside agencies. So yes, we have that, it's posted on our website. It's part of our Mental Health Assistance Allocation Report that we do every year at the end for the state.
And the 279, since you brought it up, is also part of the 1,500? It's actually 1,490.
It can be. Dr. Hutchinson was saying that number encompasses a lot of things. Some of those students may be included in that count, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. Excellent, excellent, excellent. I think for everybody that presented, the key is the return in investment. Because everything, every, what, pre-K, health, student services, counselors, psychologists, social workers, everybody works for the betterment of that child. So it is the return on the investment. And it was our answer, and I did have the question about, are we going to be following to see who actually graduates? I mean, the first benchmark would be how they do at third grade. Did they meet the benchmarks for third, and then do they graduate? But you'll have all that, be able to track those cohorts and see how they do. Because I'm a big proponent of pre-K. And then I think with the health, I just, how you broadened it, I think is just phenomenal. Having LPNs in the majority of schools, that's, and the health nurses. But I'm really, I like what's happened with the dental, because that used to be, you just, if you, I would just have to call a dentist and basically, "Babe, will you see this?" But having actual dental, because you're right, Suzy, you, those little guys with their teeth, you got to catch it early. So that I'm real pleased with. And I think partnering with the USF and Gulf Coast is critical, to have that training from the day, you know, from what's current, and all the latest research from the universities of working with the student services staff, I think is, it's very commendable, so good. I think for me, what really, this is all great, and this is probably going to be more directed to Superintendent Connor, because he gets it all the time. But this is all great, and you guys don't have any control over it. But it's what happens in that building. And if, and I'll just use the counselors, because they are school-based. But when they get pulled to do cafeteria duty, before-school duty, after-school duty, everybody has a part in all that. But when it's every day, and it's a couple hours a day, that cuts in to what all you're trying to do. So what's that return on investment? So I think it's going to be really critical to monitor, not micromanage, but monitor what is happening in those buildings to all this support staff. Because they are, we've got kids that have serious, serious problems. So we're going to be spending a lot of money on that. But if they're not able to get to those kids, because they're asked to do a lot of other things, that is what concerns me. Because we can allocate all we want, but if they're not, people are not being used in the way they need to be used, then all this, it'll fall apart. So that's my, so I, but anyway. I'm very impressed, so thank you all very, very much. And I know I kind of go off, but I'm very passionate about student services. I'm very passionate about what our teachers do, because we only have one shot of this. We only have one shot with kids. And when they leave us at 18, we want them to be the best equipped for everything they can have. So we need to make sure, me as a board member, to support everything for kids, but we also have to make sure everything's in place for our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Ziegler, please.
Thank you very much. Well, I know that this is incredibly passionate team you guys, I mean, the fact you guys color-coordinate every time you come, that's amazing. So I really want to commend you all. Early education is something I'm incredibly passionate about, and I'm really excited to see us really execute on this. I mean, I don't think anyone hasn't been passionate about it, but to see us move forward. And I know, so I know we talked about, Mr. Edwards had covered a lot, but as far as, as far as, as far as us expanding, I know there's a funding component, but do we have a waitlist for the VPK programs? Or did we this past year?
So I'm glad that you would ask that. We have, we do have waitlists for some of our VPK programs. However, anytime there's a waitlist, we do refer our VPK families, the ones that have a certificate of eligibility, to the closest nearby VPK-available program, not only within our school district, but within the community. So there are still available seats, and families are encouraged, if we are not, if that particular school doesn't have any seats remaining, to consider the possibility of a different VPK program, somewhere either in our school district or within a community provider.
And then what do we do, kind of to follow up, Suzy? Because we're, again, year one, trying to expand. And again, I just think of the shit, you want to keep your child in that kind of same environment, because that continuity is beneficial to them. Obviously, they're going to eventually come to us. If we recommended another provider, for example, can you talk to me like what that process would be to bring them back in? If we have capacity, or we thought that far?
Yeah, so we maintain the waitlist, and so we continually review how many seats that are available. And we personally have reached out or talked to every single family. We don't necessarily recommend a different VPK provider within the community. We'll say, hey, we have seats available at XYZ School, if you're interested there. If you're interested in exploring community opportunities, please reach out to the Sarasota Early Learning Coalition. And we partner really closely with them. They were big partners for us in our K-Riser events, and helped us to put those on, for example.
And do, I don't know if you have that, I mean, what is that number? I just know that in early education, there's just, there's not much. And preschool daycare, whatever you want to call it, this is obviously more enriching. But that, and those are, the rate lists are real. So what do our, I mean, what are the numbers that we're looking at that we have families that are hoping we can serve?
So the great news is, is that we never close off opportunities to our families. We continue to allow them to apply for our VPK programs, and we add their names to a waitlist. Right now, at the present time, our waitlists are pretty small, depending on the school. Some schools may have 10 families on a waitlist, other schools may have 15. We're not really beyond that. And because it changes every day, I'm not really at the place to like say, this is the exact number.
No, no, no. That range is just fine, I know if we're talking hundreds or like 20. So that was very, that was...
We're still in the process of notifying families who are on the waitlist and trying to work with them individually to get them connected to where they need to be. We're not giving up on families that are on the waitlist. Rather, we know that we have an obligation to make sure that they're connected to the right spot. That's part of what we want to do as a department.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Some things to add to that. South County is an area that we would love to...
Some things to add to that, South County is an area that we would love to put more, if we had a place to put more. But even like the Lamarck population, there's a band, but we have to put units at Glen Allen, or we have to put units at Atwater, so that we can host more pre-K families, but not necessarily at the school, because there's a capacity issue. So although it's ideal to say Lamarck kids go to Lamarck and can be there the whole time, our goal has shifted, because we just want to give as many, the opportunity as possible, which means that they may be at Glen Allen, but go to kindergarten at Lamarck. So really, it's where there's opportunity, same thing with Taylor Ranch, we actually added a VPK unit to Taylor Ranch for next year. So that's exciting, because she's excited to have her kiddos there, but then we have our other schools sharing each other's kids to give them the opportunity to be more kindergarten-ready, despite if it's at the school they're going to be going to or not.
And then Ms. Ziegler, just to kind of put a bow on that, a whole process there, you know, in those examples where we do have a student who maybe is going to attend, let's say kindergarten at Lamarck, but is going to VPK at Glen Allen, the team has developed, oh, excuse me, the team has developed a kind of a transition process to ensure that there's been communication between the pre-K program at Glen Allen and then the incoming program at kindergarten, so that, you know, we're learning as much as we can about the kiddos and the families and what are the needs, so that that transition becomes as seamless as possible.
One more thing.
Okay.
With South County. As you heard Mr. Connor share, just making sure that we can offer choice to as many people that have applied for choice in our schools, which includes South County, which includes schools that are pushing over 1,000 kids, making sure every seat counts, even if it's above 90%. So then we also have this demand for pre-K, but we also have demand for K-5 students. So it is literally, it's very difficult, and it's a balancing act between how many pre-K seats can we add, how many more K-5 seats can we add, in addition to making sure that we're not putting a school over capacity too far. So it's a dance, in addition to our ESE specialized programs, because you have to balance all of that out to make sure the school's equipped to serve well, not just everything, but doing as much as we can, as well as we can. So it's definitely, those three things are in play all the time in making these decisions.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, great presentation. I think that's, obviously, I think all of us would agree that the VPK and that beginning, that impacts everything that rests. So I like that Superintendent Connor stated that, you know, Dr. O'Day, that.
Dr. O'Day. I went to FSU, and you were my professor.
Thank you, yes, thank you. But I mean, at the end of the day, to be able to look into capacity, I think the more that we can do, the better we can within the county, because I think that ultimately, you know, raises everything from the bottom that goes up. So again, great presentation. I know everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing, mental health is such an issue. You know, I hate to bring it up, you look at the FSU shooting recently, you continue to look around, it's not a matter of, it's when and where, unfortunately. So the mental health piece is such a significant thing, that we have to always make sure that we're trying to be at the cutting edge in identifying students. So with that, we'll continue with the presentation.
Okay, we'll move on to Dr. Wasserman.
All right, well, to continue on with the collaboration and our theme of how we are an interconnected team, I'm going to share some updates with you that I'm excited, they're great highlights, and our team has been very busy, engaged in collaboration, support and capacity-building efforts that are making a real difference in our schools, as importantly, in the lives of our students. And what I'm going to be sharing today is going to align with both pillar one and pillar two, looking at how students achieve and how we're supporting students. You'll also note, as indicated by Dr. Hutchinson and Chief O'Day, that there are also some ties to the program review outcomes, and we'll look forward to sharing those with you in a later date. All right, I have to do both here.
Can we do it?
You want to do it?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So one of the exciting highlights that I really am proud to share is our Pre-Eds program that we have, that pre-employment transition skills program that we have. And so this is something that we shared earlier with you in the year, that we were the first in the state to have this program, and it has really surpassed everything that we dreamed of, and I'm excited for you to see all of the great things. We had the five comprehensive high schools, who have had about 50 students who've been participating. They do participate twice weekly, it is after-school, because it is supplementing, not supplanting our program. They also have some weekend activities that are planned, that align to the initiatives of the program. And so one of the most powerful outcomes that we've had, that we've noted, is that sense of connection, and giving them a sense of purpose that they're developing. And this is happening across not just the school little community, but they're actually coming together as a district community, which is great, because they're connecting outside of their own schools. And they've actually coined themselves the Career Club. So you can see that they actually have created very similar logos, but obviously school-specific, and we were able to tailor these to some attire that they're going to wear when they go to their internships over the summer. So they're very excited to have that connection, and it's really helped them with that professionalism. So just some hands-on highlight, as I shared before, they have visited some local businesses. So they had about 50 that they went to, and they've gotten to go behind the scenes in the fronts, they've talked to the human resources departments, they've visited some local college and some local programs. And this has really given them that valuable insight, and helping them understand what employers are looking for when they're hiring candidates. And this is really important, because that's part of that career process development. But we are also providing a curriculum of a scope and sequence that they go through. And so we're preparing students for the workforce, and they're aligned with career awareness, job exploration, and self-advocacy. And students are learning how to advocate for themselves while gaining essential work readiness skills, but they're also learning how to write resumes and prepare for interviews. And this is really just making sure that they're ready for that next step in that career process. And an exciting opportunity for them is a culminating activity that's happening this weekend, and they get to have an incredible opportunity to explore zoological careers at Busch Gardens. This is where they get to go and work directly with the animal experts, they get to understand the education, they get to understand the training, and they get to understand what those roles look like and gain that real-world experience. But the best part is, after that, they get a VIP experience with the Human Resources Department of Busch Gardens. And they get to learn about that hiring process and potential career opportunities in the zoological world. So this is truly a VIP experience for our students, and a wonderful way for them to close out their year of career exploration, and it will help broaden their understanding of the workforce and maybe inspire them for a different kind of path. So this is a great slide to show you just some of the visits that they've gone to the local communities. This is at Sarasota Memorial Hospital was one of the businesses, as well as Bank of America, and not only did they get to visit and learn about the bank, but they also were able to open checking accounts and learn about some financial literacy skills. As you can also see, we wanted to make sure that we were tapping into our own Sarasota County Schools opportunities, and the students got to meet with our very own Human Resources Department to look at those different pathways and career opportunities within our district. A really exciting moment for the students, we were able to align something where they got to go to Macy's or JCPenney's, and they got to meet with a stylist. And the stylists worked with them one-on-one, personalizing, teaching them how to dress for an interview, and how to act, and what to say, and what to do. And this was really a highlight for these students, and we've actually created mock interviews at each of the school sites, and I was able to be a part of, not all of them, but some of them, with their school administrators. And the students came in dressed like that, they came in prepared, they rocked those interviews better than people that typically come in and interview, and we were able to give some feedback on how to make it better for them. And one of the highlights is, one of the students told me, because I was asking about the Career Club afterwards, I'm like, okay, interview's over, now we're going to talk about the Career Club, tell me what you liked about it, because I want to know how to make things better. So he said, well, I got a job, I got a job at Sarasota Memorial Hospital, and I said, oh, that's one of the businesses you went? And I said, did you wear your suit? And he said, yes, I did. So for me, it was kind of like the culmination of the entire program, putting it together, and then feeling that success. So that was really exciting, and just a great opportunity for them. So, so let's talk about the data, okay? So I think important to really look at, because we really want to kind of track, how is this improving our students, okay? And so one of the significant relationships that I talked about, that connectedness, was the power of relationships, and I think we talk about that a lot. But both students and staff has shared that their relationships built through this program have been a key to their success. And these connections have given them the sense of belonging, a sense of purpose, and a clear understanding of what life will be like after high school. So if you look at the data, 100% of our students are connected with vocational rehab. Why is this important? This program does support students with disabilities, and vocational rehab is one of the programs that we invite to all of our IEPs, because it is a, is an agency that helps support students as they're transitioning towards graduation, and they can also support them as they go into career employment. So it is a fabulous agency that's really worked closely with us and partnered with us, and so to me, that is a critical component of helping students understand their independence of success beyond our K-12 experience. I think anecdotally, you can see there's some information from the students that I added to the slide, those are just a couple quotes that I took from, just real reflections from students. Students are indicating that this experience has changed them. And if you see these students, and I know a couple people have, I've had conversations with administrators who've got to see them in this role, the changes in these students have been incredible over the year. The data is going to show you that there's been an increase in attendance. We heard from our partners at Student Services, that attendance is a key, when you're in school, you get to learn and you get to have opportunities and success. We're building success for these students. The discipline has gone down. One student, I looked at her data, she had 17 referrals this year, one referral. So we're showing that there's a better engagement, and then also their GPAs are going up. They're feeling that sense of purpose and belonging, and that there's actually light at the end of the tunnel, and there's a purpose of what we're going to do. So that, to me, is really exciting. I'm going to go on to the next slide. The other piece that we looked at is we've gotten a lot of feedback from the teachers. So at the schools, I shared with you earlier in the year, that the great piece is that teachers and staff from the actual high schools are taking on the mentorship for this program, and they are highly, highly committed to this program. So they're developing those core relationships, it's not somebody that just shows up, they get to see them and be embedded. When we took out and we created some themes, what we found was the student engagement had increased with motivation. Students who are chronically absent, who had that chronic absenteeism, are now coming to school. When we go to family involvement and homeschool connection, they're finding that there's a deeper connection and engagement with the families, and really having that true connection to help the students. The relationship building and social growth, at the heart of this, the Career Club is that connection, and the teacher are finding that they're shifting their educator role to more of that mentor and coach to help them build on that success going into their next phase of life. And then the career readiness and real-world learning, this is making those futures real for those students, boosting career awareness and that self-confidence. But most importantly, I think what was a huge takeaway, is the professional reflection and meaningful impact. The teachers are indicating that this is the most impactful and joyful experiences of their careers, and that this is why they became a teacher. So that really showed a lot of powerful messages on how this has been such an impact, not just for the students, but also for the staff. All right, so another highlight is our 13th Annual Agency Fair. And this year, we were able to host it in South County. It was at Suncoast Technical College in Northport. Our theme was Explore and Connect: Your Passport to Community Supports, and that's exactly what we did. This was a collaborative effort with Student Services, our pre-K department, and we were creating a welcoming space for both our teams to help our families and provide those meaningful connections. We were thrilled that 24 different community agencies were in attendance, and they each offered resources, guidance, and firsthand information to help family navigate transition planning and long-term support. A special highlight was, the Career Club students were able to make an appearance, and they did an incredible job assisting with the booths, sharing personal experiences related to vocational rehab, and also their program that they've been working in, and helping just families feel welcome. And the turnout was really, really positive. It offered real actionable opportunities for our families to feel supported and connected for what's available in our community, and the event really does remind you that the impact we can make is really huge when we bring people together with purpose. All right, so this is a huge highlight that I'm really proud to share with you. As part of our reorganization and restructuring, we have the opportunity to redefine how our department supports schools. And the results have both been strategic and impactful. And one of the most meaningful changes was how we had targeted deployment of our ESE program facilitators. They are now focused on that program development at the school level. So to date, we've had over 1,300 documented instances of school support, ranging from full day to half-days to a specific class-period support. But what makes this more than just a number, it's the intentionality behind it. These are not one-time visits. Every interaction is part of ongoing support plan, guided by school requests and identified needs. Whether it's delivering program-specific professional learning, coaching staff, collaborating on student support plans, or troubleshooting unique challenges, the work is rooted in partnership. And it doesn't happen in isolation, there is a strong and deliberate collaborative effort across curriculum, academic intervention, student services, preschool. Together, we are viewing school needs through a comprehensive lens, ensuring that students with disabilities, the teachers and their families are receiving the support and solutions that they need to thrive. And this work is essential, and we're just getting started.
While you catch your breath.
Okay. That, it's important to note, good job. There, the emphasis and the passion that was really, this position and staff that were in positions did a lot of overhaul. We redesigned job descriptions, we had collaborative focus groups, we changed the way we meet, what we talk about, what we do, how we do it. And so it was a heavy lift for everybody, and then even those on the receiving end of this staff were being in partnership. So it's been wonderful, and there has been huge advancements, they still have more to do, so it's important to note that is a part of the vision of the board, the superintendent, the program review, with redesigning roles, responsibilities, and job description, and the reorganization. While you keep seeing this interconnectedness that's occurring comes from that, and you'll continue to hear that and see that advance. So that's just an important highlight there.
Okay, thank you, Chief O'Day. All right, so another collaborative partnership piece is, I want to give you a huge highlight on how we've expanded our district's approach to behavior support through the strong partnership with mindset. This is our verbal and physical de-escalation program. And so beginning this past August, we worked closely with mindset to roll out monthly target frameworks that empower our behavior coaches to support and reinforce essential training. But to make that even more meaningful, 16 school sites received two to three days of individual onsite coaching, a job-embedded model designed to build internal capacity and enhance behavior management practices in real time. What made this so effective was how tailored it was in the approach. Each principal met with the mindset trainer to align the training with the uniques of their, unique needs of their school, because we know all schools have different needs, they're in different places and spaces. And at the end of each day, the school debriefed with the trainer to reflect, collaborate, and plan the next steps in the professional learning journey. So as I talked about the redesign and deployment of our ESE program facilitators, they were also an integral part of this process. This involvement ensures continuity. As we move into the next school year, they're well-positioned to build on their strengths, address any areas of need, but also identify any trends that will help shape future professional learning. And it's really important, because at the core of this, it's a trauma-informed approach. It's not just what is the behavior, it's the why behind it, and shifting that mindset is really what's going to help move the needle for both our students and staff. So as you heard about the cadres with my partner over here, we've also been working on our professional learning cadres, so I want to share with you a little bit about that. So we've made some, we've made some positive changes to our monthly professional learning opportunities, and the sessions now reflect a stronger balance between compliance requirements and curriculum-based practices. These are all rooted in standards alignment, district initiatives, and accessible curriculum resources. What makes this shift even more impactful is the multidisciplinary collaboration that's driving it. We are creating spaces where we're working smarter and not harder, where shared expertise is now opening up new possibilities for how we support students. For example, we are integrating assistive technology in powerful ways. We're supporting access to curriculum, reading and writing tasks, and digital tools that meet students where they are. We're expanding access to instructional materials across disciplines. So our speech-language pathologists have also been receiving. So our speech-language pathologists have also been receiving um, uh, professional learning related to the curriculum and the resources. They're partnering with our ESE teachers to plan, design, and deliver educationally relevant therapy that aligns with classroom content. This collaboration not only enriches student experiences, but also maximizes how the impact during that service delivery. Chief O'Day talked a little bit about performance matters. We also are digging into performance matter. This is through intentional use to guide decision-making, drive progress monitoring, and ultimately write better present levels of performance and targeted measurable IEP goals. So we're excited to continue to enhance that professional learning for our cadres. Alright, and my last slide. So finally, I'm excited to share with you um, our upcoming Student Support Services Institute. We had this last year, um, we had incredible outpouring of excitement and positive feedback from staff and we're, we're gonna, we're eager to build upon that for this upcoming year. Our theme is Own the Impact: Engage, Empower, Elevate. And so we're going to have tailored um, professional learning pathways for paraprofessionals, support staff, teachers, administrators. Um, and this year, um, we're excited to kick off the 25, 26th school year with a shared commitment that every action we take can change the trajectory of student learning and outcomes. So through this event, we'll focus on the effective strategies, approaches, ensuring that staff have the tools that they need to help support students the best possible way going into the next year. It's an exciting opportunity to collaborate and grow together as a team and we're really excited. It's really starting to shape up to be an outstanding, amazing event that you're not going to want to miss on July 23rd and 24th at Riverview High School. So we are excited to continue on with our journey. There's been a lot of great things that have happened and, and uh, I'm glad I was able to share with you.
While we transition to Dr. Clayton, it's important to note that our Baransik Grant will be paying for this professional learning um, for our school-based staff and district staff during that time. So that's exciting. And last year, we wrote a grant for the, through the Bureau of School Improvement and that's how we were able to fund that. So it's very important that we continue to fund, breed, utilize funds to meet the needs aligned to our strategic plan and priorities.
Ms. Reddard?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Clayton, I have to leave a little early, so please don't take offense. Dr. Wasserman, your joy and your passion just blew it through the roof. Thank you so much. Um, w- we all need that. We all need that. Um, I love the fact that your career clubs really encapsulate um, something that everyone knows that every student should graduate with a plan, enrolled, enlisted, or employed, and that does mean every student. So that's really well done. And lastly, I just want, I ca- I said this before, this reorg is fantastic. It is, it is unbelievable. What a change. Chief O'Day, well done.
Ms. Ziegler?
I, hmm, they have so much joy about the work that you guys have done and I, Chief O'Day making that known that it was a lot of work. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank you guys because it is absolutely changing lives. It is bringing families in when they've needed that help and it's helping support our students who absolutely deserve it and have so much opportunity. And I just, thank you. I'm going to stop talking now. July 23rd and 24th.
Well, thank you. I, it's just amazing how far in just a year, two years since we did the, the study and all the recommendations. It's um, and I, I know you've worked very, very hard, everybody has, but hearing about the Career Club and all the exciting things and how, how, the excitement that you all have, that you have, I can't say anything else that my colleagues haven't said, but I think our students, they must just, especially this Career Club, just really enjoy coming to school. There's a direct connection now of why they're there. So kudos. And I, the compliance has always been there, but the curriculum hasn't. And now you have the curriculum piece that's really connecting it all. So I appreciate everything you've done and thank you.
Ms. Barker?
Yeah, I'm thrilled to hear all about this. This is wonderful. You're making my heart happy. Um, and I just wanted to share an encouragement with you. I have um, two students who receive services and I have noticed a huge improvement in the way that even those 504 meetings take place and the type of data that um, is being tracked. And so I know that it is a huge lift on your part, but it's making a difference for us as parents in the everyday um, for our students. So thank you so much.
Can I just say, great presentation. I could see the work. The big thing is the total change that you could see from where it was to where it is now. So I, again, um, as we continue, it's not anymore that, you know, and I've just said this, in Sarasota, we should always lead, never follow. Before, it was just compliance. We'll just make sure we're compliant. Or we should never be compliant. We should always do as much as we can, especially uh, with the students that we have, every single kid. So with that, we'll go ahead and continue forward with the next presentation.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. Well, I'm so excited to be here and be part of the Student Services Team and talk to you about the work of the Office of Academic Interventions. We are a small but mighty team. We're able to do amazing work because of the term that has been bounced around a lot today, interconnectedness. I'm really excited to be able to be before you today. So this school year, we were able to prioritize the need for focusing on students that are going through the discipline process and to align support uh, in alignment with the superintendent's strategic plan. Um, you've heard throughout the presentations today, the unique and impactful ways, the passion that Student Services has to support our students. So I'm really, really excited to briefly share with you some of the, the unique ways that the Academic Interventions Team has worked. So the first thing we'll talk about is our upcoming Code of Student Conduct, our new Code of Student Conduct for the 2025 to 2026 school year. We'll do a reflection as well as what's happened for this school year. We also uh, will talk about some ways that we have engaged key community stakeholders to work collaboratively to support students and families as they navigate through the discipline cycle. We also are going to discuss a robust process that we have in place for responding to student needs and a new state mandate called Academic Intervention Plans and what that means and what that's going to look like. It's kind of something that's a, a blast from the past that's come back um, that we're going to talk about what that looks like. So the next slide here, um, I love this slide. You uh, may remember or recall seeing this. What this is focusing on is the thought that, you know, students um, demonstrate behavior that's not consistent with our Code of Student Conduct, that we want to focus on just more than discipline, the, the traditional forms of discipline, which are typically amounting to things like, you know, out-of-school suspension, which is warranted at times, of course, um, but also talking about what are those interventions? So we really want to thank Mr. Connor. We want to thank you as a school board for the improved Code of Student Conduct that we were able to put in place for the 2024 to 2025 school year that focuses on those interventions as well. The goal was to have that Code of Student Conduct that was representing all of the traditional forms of discipline uh, to student behavior, uh, as well as the systematic supports that will be in place. So the goal that we have is to create the greatest degree of consistency throughout all of our schools with all of our students who are going through the Code of Student Conduct for behaviors of concern. So having said that, uh, there are four pieces to our Code of Student Conduct implementation that occurred this year, just looking back throughout the year. We implemented the revised Code of Student Conduct, uh, including all of our, our charters and all of our schools. We conducted monthly professional learning for school administrators, um, to ensure that there was greater understanding of what these interventions look like and have that consistency. We also extended training to our support staff, including our threat management teams in terms of what responding to student discipline looks like. And then the next thing, which I'll talk to you about in greater detail, is we conducted six focus groups that reviewed the Code of Student Conduct uh, this spring and offered input for updates so that we can be on that trajectory of having greater consistency. So our focus group process began with organizing opportunities uh, to hear from a wide range of key stakeholders within our buildings and even in some cases outside of our buildings. We simply wanted to know what was working and also how can we improve. We encouraged open dialogue and we also wanted to make sure we had a way of documenting the feedback that we received from them. So we had a focus group with our Sarasota County Teachers and Classified Union reps. Uh, that was a great focus group. We actually brought back the same group that we worked with a year ago. We worked with them again in December, midway through the year to find out how we were doing, to give us some feedback. And then we met with them also in uh, April. That was a great meeting to be able to hear from them. These are actual teachers and classified staff who are directly working with our students. So we were able to get some great feedback. Our anti-vaping task force, Mr. Connor's Anti-Vaping Task Force, was also an area where we were able to get some great feedbacks on that, included recommendations directly from students that uh, we were able to make its way directly into our Code of Student Conduct. Of course, all of our uh, school and our district leaders, uh, we pulled them together. Um, I was thankful for the opportunity to work with a number of other staff members to be able to get their feedback in terms of how we're doing and also work towards getting that greater level of consistency. We also worked with our transportation leaders. I know you heard this morning uh, from our transportation department and many other departments, but we have such a unique um, opportunity to hear from them because they're the voice of our bus drivers who often greet our students in the morning or they're the last ones to see them, um, and also to navigate uh, behaviors that do sometimes occur on the bus. So we did meet and have a separate meeting and focus group with them. Um, our community partners, that was an awesome opportunity. One of the slides that was um, presented earlier by my colleague here, Ms. Jackalone, really focused on some of our community partners that are supporting our families. So we were able to pull them together and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a, in a future slide. Um, our legal team provided um, very important um, responses and, and review in terms of the things that we were trying to do. And then of course, um, we looked at the results of the cell phone policy survey uh, that uh, no, I know was discussed with the school board as well. So what this next slide does, it really does focus on, you know, the strong student supports that we were looking at getting in place so we can architect a co- a comprehensive Code of Student Conduct or a comprehensive system to support students. Um, the one thing that we, I can say throughout all of our focus groups that we met with is that there was a need for the greatest amount of consistency or greater consistency and clarity in terms of what's expected of the Code of Student Conduct. This slide indicates uh, several of the things that we were able to take from their uh, feedback, um, that the Code of Student Conduct was well written, it was clear. However, it's a long document. It's something that we wanted to make sure we can create um, palatable um, ways of sharing this information with the, with the um, with the parents in our community. So we did things like um, added hyperlinks to state statutes or school board policies or other types of um, other uh, legislation so that where they could understand uh, where these, these thoughts or where these um, interconnected things are coming from. And then the last thing was also inter-agency partnerships. So we have so many great agencies throughout our uh, community, uh, along with parental or guardian consent, um, that really do support our students. And we really wanted to make a more noticeable effort of including that into the discipline process. So um, design strong student supports, um, our vaping task force. So there were some great recommendations that came out of our vaping task force. Um, just a couple of them included incorporating educational videos for students. Uh, we do have some at the present time, but we really got some great recommendations for a curriculum to explore. So we have a team that's looking into that to see what this can look like. So ask students, um, engage in vaping to give them some more information um, as it relates to that. Um, have opportunities open up in um, in our schools even to be able to explore that further. So there's going to be more to come on that. That's one of our summer work groups is to work through that. Um, I was really pleased, um, some of the students came up with a great um, a student, parent, guardian, anti-vaping pledge, um, something that could be done proactively, particularly as students go from middle school to high school, also as something that could be done in response to um, documented incidences of students uh, vaping. So that's something that we're looking at exploring. I'm excited that um, we have this, this resource of information from the Anti-Vaping Task Force to be able to include in the Code of Student Conduct. Um, the cell phone policy recommendations were, and this was again, um, recommendations and thank you again to our school board members for having the opportunity for those one-on-one meetings over the last few days. Um, I really did appreciate your feedback. Um, and one of the things we were able to do was to make sure that we were on the right track as it relates to uh, the cell phone policy. Um, to really making sure that our, our consequences for cell phones misuse is something that's aligned to rigorous expectations for students. So having said that, um, on the first incidences of students violating the Code of Student Conduct, we added new consequences, including things like detention or in some cases, if it's severe enough, an in-school restriction, along with the other consequences that were already there, li- there like um, parent and guardian contact, confiscation of an electronic device, and then uh, relational practices, which was previously known as restorative practices. So with the update of um, of our, uh, with the closing of our legislative session just on May 2nd, there were some changes um, that looked like there will be in place with the cell phone policy and that it will be something that we will definitely incorporate into our Code of Student Conduct um, as those, those, those changes are finalized. So we received some feedback. So um, some of the feedback that we received were that staff members, they truly embrace and understand the progressive discipline framework um, of the Code of Student Conduct, but there is a need to have a greater focus on intervention. So there is a greater desire for professional learning, uh, for teachers, uh, to support that consistency and to support that clarity. We are going to do a number of different things that um, we haven't necessarily done uh, in the past, but we're going to move forward in this direction to include uh, training for teach. One thing I loved um, from our, our SETA focus group in particular is that they were really brainstorming the different ways you can provide professional learning um, that are, that would be impactful for them. Uh, the other thing I want to do uh, to say is that uh, throughout our Code of Student Conduct, our current Code of Student Conduct, there are 188 references to the term restorative practices. So just recently, uh, we received an indication from uh, the Florida Department of Education that the new terminology is uh, relationship-based practices. Our awesome Student Services Department, they are already in the process of organizing professional learning along the lines of relationship-based practices and what that would look like for teachers and support staff and also for school leaders. Um, also, also our schools will have access to these trainings throughout the year um, for additional staff. Um, and then finally, in addition to all of this, uh, the collaboration that we have with the PBIS partnership at the University of South Florida will provide additional training opportunities to understand um, relationship-based practices as we move into the new school year and how that could be something that can be transformative for a student. So finally, I keep forgetting to do this. So finally, I just wanted to include a quote that we received from uh, one of our um, SETA focus groups. Um, I was just really excited about the um, the feedback that we received from them, not in, just in terms of Code of Student Conduct, but just also about our process. We want to be open, we want to listen, we want to be able to um, provide support, but we also want to be able to um, you know, give them the space they can talk through these things. And I love this quote because it does go right back to um, you know, Mr. Connor, um, directing our student, our district to really work in collaboration with teachers and that's definitely something we were able to do and um, we're committed to doing as we move forward. Okay, so the um, the next slide uh, goes back to something I mentioned earlier is we really uh, wanted to bring in our community partners and this is just an example of some of the community partners that we worked with. And we have a picture here. I just love this picture because you can see uh, there's a ton of um, people who are in this, in this picture who aren't necessarily uh, staff members, but they work for these amazing organizations in our communities just to support our children and our families. So this was from one of our community-based organizations, uh, a forum that we had on a professional day, so on, on January 17th of this year. Um, and we also had another one just recently. And the goal of the partnerships were to ensure that uh, the mission and the vision that we have for really supporting students is clear to them, but also they were able to share some of the amazing and unique ways that they're supporting students. And what we were able to find out is that in some cases, you know, different organizations were supporting the same families. Um, and so we were And so, we were able to get some really great feedback from them. They're on board with really supporting our students and families in meaningful ways to be able to decrease the discipline concerns that we see in the school setting. So, more to come on that because we do plan to continue to focus those meetings and get their feedback as well. So, this slide here, it really goes back to the dropout prevention and academic intervention programs statutory requirements. So, there was a major update to the academic intervention programs statute that's listed here. And this update requires a school district establish what's called an AIP or Academic Intervention Plan for students that are showing signs of difficulty based on academic achievement, based on discipline, based on attendance, and also to ensure that this academic intervention plan is really developing measurable objectives, comprehensive strategies, and supports for the student. So, one of the things that I think is a key outcome, I'm so excited about, it's been a great opportunity for multiple departments to come together, Student Service Departments, but also our Curriculum Department, our Technology Department. And when I say Curriculum Departments, elementary, middle, and high school. We also worked through our multi-language learning department. We had our Gov. Affairs Department. I mean, the list just goes on and on in terms of the ways we were able to get together, roll up our sleeves, and come up with a document that not only satisfies the statutory requirements for having an academic intervention plan to corral support for the student, but to also bring in some of the other mandates that have to happen related to like, for instance, the substantial reading deficiency, that's a required documentation that had similar but not quite the same expectations, or the math reading deficiency is similar but not quite the same. But, we were able to come up with a unique way to present this as an academic intervention plan and this will be something we'll roll out over the year.
And, you know, just to kind of highlight, I think, Ms. Marinelli, you mentioned the number of requirements it comes out of in terms of some paperwork components. And so, this is an example of where we are trying to streamline that to where we have one document that enables us to provide those notifications and meet all those statutory requirements when it comes to, say, your substantial reading deficiency, substantial math deficiency, course and credit recovery, notice of intervention, all of those kind of in a one-stop shop. And so, our IT team has done a great job and Dawn has been leading that work to where it has kind of created this drop, this menu option so that we know that as we are creating this academic intervention plan, it is, we're able to identify specifically what are the needed notifications that go along with that. And using our focus portal, it's going to be automatically shared with families, but then also a great guiding document to when we start talking about what does that look like in reality? How do we implement that in the school? It's a great opportunity to kind of guide that conversation with families and with staff as well. So, really excited about that work.
And for clarity, it's the same plan we talked about when we talked about the Student Progression Plan, same exact thing, but you can see how that's all funneling into one and very, very necessary pre-K through 12 and highlighting just some of the dropdowns that Dr. Hutchinson was referencing.
All right. So, thank you. So, the last thing I just wanted to mention is our Project 10 process. So, excited to be able to work with Dr. Green as well as our principals, who, Dr. Green, who really leads this work with Project 10. So, we are able to, thank you, Dr. Hutchinson, because once again, I forgot to advance the slide. We really are excited about the work that we do with our Project 10, which is really supporting all of our students towards that, that goal of, you know, after four years of entering a high school, that they're walking across that stage, that they are prepared, that they are, they're prepared with a high school diploma in hand. So, we have really amped up our resources and our supports and our touchpoints with our school leaders. We design in conjunction again with Dr. Green and her, and the principals, we design weekly at this point, Project 10 meetings where we are reviewing every single student and seeing where they're at and then also asking the question, what else? What's needed? What interventions do we need to put in place? We're doing this interconnected thing at our schools as well that's happening here. We're doing it at our schools and monitoring for those success measures. So, really excited about the work that we're doing with Project 10, which is our graduation rate initiative throughout the district as well. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak to you today. It's been a pleasure and thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start. I mean, the Code of Conduct, I mean, again, with all the changes on the stuff that we did, we had a great productive meeting. I would say though, I did go, one of the things, I'm a big advocate of mentoring and I brought Biggs with Badges to Sarasota, the School Police Department. When I met with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, you know, they've moved their office now to Clark Road. It's a branded facility out there. One of the things that we discussed when we were out there is to be able to have access to some of the schools, like in the past, they used to have, at Venice High School, they actually had an office there back in the day in order to be able to mentor kids when, when the Biggs would come on campus, that they would be able to get their kids and they had a place, they could eat lunch. So, I mean, I think that's something where, I know that they have expressed to me that that's something that they very, very much would like to get back into doing. And I think that mentoring piece is huge. I know that we had one of our SROs up at Booker High School that had a kid and he actually won, part of it was, he ended up winning the Florida Association of School Resource Officers, Officer of the Year because of the impact that he had on that student while he was there, which is part of the Biggs Program, which is Biggs with Badges. So, just to put that out there, I know that they would be very much interested. And if you haven't been out to the new facility, it's, it's a lot different than the one they had in Venice, which was, you know, it's just, it's really, really, really nice. It's by the BMW dealership on Clark Road is where they're at now.
Yes.
With that, I appreciate everything. Again, I know discipline is a, is a significant issue with the teachers and the faculty and the support groups. And again, it's another thing with Superintendent Connor that he heard what everybody was saying. And again, this is a continuing process of making it better so that learning continues to move forward. Ms. Ziegler?
Thank you so much. I really enjoyed our long meeting. I was, yesterday, that was more because I kept talking about cellphones, big shocker. But, the work that you guys do is tremendous and it's not, you know, we look at stuff at this level and such an aggregated component when we're talking about particularly discipline and looking at trends and such, but what I think even, Project 10's a great example, but even just the daily work is tailored to the individuals. And I want to salute you and your team for all the work that you do. Your heart is huge and you go and look at these scenarios as opportunities versus just at, you know, not as just disciplinary, right? I mean, we have high expectations. We're not lowering those standards, but each student, each scenario is different. And I know that that's with partnerships around the community, but also with the work that you guys do, that that's how you approach it and I, it's to be incredibly commended. I do, I know we talked about this yesterday and you did touch on it just for the, for the sake of the public, because in education and certainly when we deal with statutory changes or regulatory changes, sometimes words change, but does the purpose change? And when there's certain buzzwords, I think like resiliency, I know we went through that before, and there is actually an actual difference. But, now we have, so it was, it used to be restorative justice, then it went to restorative practices, and now it's changed to relational practices, but that is different is my understanding. Is that a fair, so, so restorative, sorry, restorative practices, because it's in the, in this presentation, it says formerly known as restorative practices, relational practices, which we talked about yesterday being different, but for the purposes of the public. Can we drill down on that a little bit more, please?
Yeah. So, you know, when we talk about, yes, so when we look at that, it is a little bit different. So, we have relation-based practice, relationship-based practices is what the new terminology is coming out of the FLDOE. And so, you know, as we are starting to learn more and more about that, that's why, you know, Dr. Clayton had talked about the professional learning that's going to take place so that we are able to make sure that, you know, the intent that's coming out of those types of specific relationship-based practices are being shared with our staff members and so that we are able to provide that comprehensive professional learning. And so, you know, actually, come up one of the, later this month, our team is, has a day set aside where we are going to start looking at the professional learning catalog for our cadre of staff members who are supporting and how do we infuse, you know, the expectations and kind of the intent of those practices into our behavior coaches, our counselors, all of the folks who are able to provide that wraparound support for our students so that we are really clear about what those expectations are. So, we're still learning more about that.
Right. So, hot off the presses. But, I wanted to address that because I think that, you know, rebranding, I think back into Common Core era, like the Florida State standard, right? So, it was just rebranding, but is there any, is the substantive piece of it actually different? My understanding, this is different. I guess that's, you know, still to be determined. I'm looking over at one of our experts here, because all of this came after the Parklands, correct? So, I, I know that, I know enough to be dangerous in the aspect of the terminology and those buzzwords and causing concerns. And at the heart of it is why I started to say, I know the people who are, at one point, care about the individuals, have high expectations. It is not about, you know, what color you are, where you come from, anything that it is, about the circumstances of allowing them to all achieve. And I think it's really important, I believe that's what this, this team believes. I know that's the expectation, but sometimes those words get people all excited and I wanted to seize the opportunity to address that. There was, and we did not, to be fair, we did not discuss this, but I will, I will mention it now. There was a recent executive order that came out around school discipline and Mr. Enos, I don't know if you saw, it was about a couple of weeks ago, but it was about, again, similar practices. These do not exist in Florida and they haven't for some time and they have not in our district, but I wanted to address that again publicly because the expectations and the standards are high across the board for, for all people, all students. And the team that is executing on this is extraordinary and looking at each individual student and the opportunity to allow them to succeed. So, I applaud all of you for that work. Thank you so much.
Ms. Parker?
Thanks, and I appreciate our meeting, Dr. Clayton. It was wonderful. Thank you. I know you all are working so hard on this discipline journey that we're on. And I hear what Ms. Ziegler is, is saying. And I did, I spoke with you, Dr. Clayton, but I think it's important as a district when we're trying to be as effective as possible to understand our data at a district level when it comes to discipline and whether or not we do have disproportionality, I don't know in terms of our discipline, but I think it's important to understand that in a, in a spirit of continuous improvement, in a spirit of wanting to be effective, I think it's important to understand what groups of students are experiencing higher incidences of discipline and whether or not those incidents of discipline, the severity, whether or not the severity is different based on those groups as well. And not just racially, but, but in terms of our ESE students, our ELL students. I, I think it will help us be more impactful in our work when we're trying to help students steer their behavior in a more positive way. So, I'd love to see that data eventually when we're able to have it and hope that it'll help us make some good strides forward, but we're already on a wonderful path and I'm, I'm very grateful for everything you all are doing. Thank you.
Ms. Marinelli?
Excellent presentation. And unless something has changed, we do collect that data. I mean, whether you're ESE, you're racial, we, we collect all of it. It's all broken down, so we get that report. So, we've always analyzed that and you, well, I'm, I'm out of here, but I mean, it's like you guys all, you analyze that every year and come up with interventions. So, all that is, is important and that's part of what we do. You look at the data. So, it's, it will be available to us. So, we get all that discipline and...
Ms. Marinelli, you are correct. So, it is, that is data that we currently collect and, you know, we do analyze that. It's part of a number of our state reporting requirements as well. And so, we will be able to, at the end of the school year, be able to share kind of the culmination of that information with you.
And just for a little history on that, on the restorative justice to restorative practices to now, when I was still employed by the district, we had an outs, a community group, yeah, come and really wanted us to incorporate the restorative justice. And we tried to explain that that, the school setting is not where we would put a criminal or, or those kinds of behaviors together. So, Student Services came up with a way that we could do it for restorative practices that our counselors were trained in. And it wasn't really anything that counselors didn't do in a group of kids that didn't get along anyway. Either you talked to them or you had a small group. So, that fit into the whole program. But, then, you know, the way things had developed from community to community, state to state, now we're calling it the relationship building, which really goes in line too because that's what it all is, is building relationships and how, learning how to deal with conflict. So, I, I understand all the changes, but that was just a little history was of how we've never done in this district restorative justice because it wasn't, it's not appropriate for a school setting with the student groups that we deal with. So, but excellent. So, the more we can clarify things, the better, more consistency and transparency. So, thank you.
Ms. Ziegler?
Well, and just to clarify, and I think that the matrix that was put into place last year helped if I, on the basis of the infraction more than anything else so that when you are able to compile that data with, because there was maybe, of course, there was more subjectivity onto the infraction and I think the matrix's goal was to get more narrowly tailored so that we don't have those injustices or targeting by any subcategory or group and that it is truly based on the infraction itself. And then comes our amazing support team to help work through that, whatever that may be. I don't, I can say with confidence, no one up here wants any sub, you know, anyone to be targeted or unfairly disciplined and, and that's, and I think our staff really needed that help on what to do if this and that. I mean, we wouldn't, we would, again, this is the, the cellphone talking, but we were talking about the wild ranges of differences and what those, what the, you're laughing at me because I, I can't get off of it. But, but the, but the fact that, you know, what, that, that there's a whole spectrum and, you know, and when you consider what do those, and that's just cellphones, I mean, think about all the other things. And so, that's very difficult, but I do also understand so that sometimes that reporting can make things look or tell a different story than the reality, I hope, and I'm looking at heads nodding, so I feel like, and you guys are doing it every day. And so, you know, what I had said yesterday is whatever we can do to help provide that support to whatever that looks like, because that's, this is hard and the behaviors are getting worse and worse, just the child, I mean, at earlier ages. But, if making, providing that clarity for staff, and I know that Dr. Clayton spoke extensively about that professional learning and continuing to do that because I believe everyone in our district wants to align, you know, the appropriate infraction based on what the incident was, right, discipline with infraction, excuse me. So, I just wanted to clarify so that didn't go off the rails on where we were talking, but I, I think we've come a long way. I just, these words sometimes public, in the public may get, become a misunderstanding that we're going back to or we're renaming something. And I actually think there's been tremendous work done and to be applauded, but I just wanted to give the opportunity for clarity. And maybe the superintendent over there will be better at summing it up than I am.
Well, I, I would say this, and there's, there's much to be learned about this relationship-based practices, but at the end of the day, relationships, let's not overcomplicate this. It's, it's about, we're talking about less than 5% of your student population that has multiple referrals. So, you already have some data to work, to work with. So, let's shrink this problem. It is an issue for our teachers and I think what I hear directly from teachers is they don't see the consistency in implementation and enforcement of behavior. And what happens is when, when there's a crime, you have to have the punishment that fits the crime, right? So, appropriate discipline per the infraction, but then there is the effort to put that student back in a cha, in that environment so that they're successful and that they're not disrupting the other students or the teacher in the classroom. And that comes down through a continuous building of relationships, setting expectations. Those are the things that we want to instill in our staff to feel supported, to feel empowered, but we got to do a good job of consistency across the board. And that was the biggest piece of feedback I got in listening tours was that school A, you know, brought out the guillotine and school B gave them a piece of candy. You see what I mean? And so, there was that inconsistency that I think we're getting better with the student Code of Conduct in addressing that in terms... in terms of what we'll utilize to, whatever term you want to use, relationships, restorative, whatever, we're going to do, relationships is the biggest piece of it. Connecting with children, connecting with parents, having conversations, setting expectations, setting the tone, those type things I think are more important than any, whatever the catchphrase is, ours, you know, whatever the flavor of the day is, you know.
Ms. Marinelli?
I don't want to belabor this, but also I think what is very important that we hear from staff is that, from the top, and you do an excellent job of that, you set the tone, and you're going to be supportive to an administrator, to a teacher, as long as everything is consistent, and it's, you're following the steps. And when a teacher knows that you have their back, or administrator has their back, then I think, and administrators know that you have their back, as long as they follow everything, that helps tremendously with the whole tone of your school, your district. And that's why it's so imperative that, you know, you say that almost every day. You set those high expectations, and you will support as long as everything's being followed. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're on to the point of member comments, board member comments. Anyone have any comments?
I do, of course.
Ms. Marinelli?
I just want to sum it up. I think that everybody's presentations were so informative, even though, you know, it's a long day, it's okay. I think it's so important where you see the operational side of the house and the instructional side of the house all work together. And that, for me, a common theme through all of this, it shows that school districts are taking on more and more, whether it's requirements for operations or on the instructional side. And we're the entity that really deals with all of the societal ills, for a better word. And I don't think the general public realizes or even can conceptualize how much the school districts do, and how much we're regulated. And there's only one pot of money, even though it's all divided up, and how to spread that out so all the needs. And I'm not one to, you know, flit money away, but with, when you hear everything, we're going to need more funding to be able to do that and really work on making sure that we're strategic where that money goes, whether it's capital or whether it's personnel, so we can do what we're supposed to be doing. But we have to be held accountable to the public, too, of where those dollars are going.
Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to say it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So, thank you very much to all of our teachers. And I know they're at the very front lines of everything that's happening, and we are so incredibly grateful for them. And thank you for all the work you all do to support them, because I know that makes a world of difference in their ability to do their jobs. So, that's it.
Ms. Ziegler?
I was going to say the same, so I'll, but I'll say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I love that it's a week. But I think going to what Mrs. Marinelli said, and we kind of spoke about this today, is just the everyday demands that are being asked of teachers. And it is, I believe it to be next to untenable. And I believe that anyone in a professional setting wants to go to work and feel like they're accomplishing great work. I mean, it doesn't matter what industry you're in. I mean, you, that's something that people have pride in. And I have no, and I know our educators are of that mind. It's truly a gift to be someone who goes towards that and wants to make a difference in so many people's lives. And so I understand that there are enormous tasks being asked. I think a lot of times people talk about the bloat of administration, and I am very proud of the systems and processes that have been put in place. And with the demands, there are more, there are more supportive roles that are required. But I believe that we are and will continue to put a, you know, an iron dome around that classroom to ensure that those supports are there. I know there's a constant conversation about what the financial future looks like, but I have the utmost confidence in our ability to weather that storm. I think that schools, unfortunately, for better for worse, again, over the course of a couple, a decade or so, seems to have been plagued with more and more, again, demands, but things that are way outside the realm of core academics. And I'm very proud to be in this district, in a state where we're able, we've been able to really clear the deck and just get down to the, because there's only so much time in a day. We talked about that many, many times today. And I believe that we've kind of moved past this opportunity, this place where there was endless distractions. And I know that we can all get on board with the focus of the academic piece. And I get, I see other districts across the country that are still grappling with that, and I couldn't be more grateful that we are past that, and we are moving forward. And I think our scores are illustrating that. So thank you to everyone for your work, for your great presentations today, and Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Well, thank you. First, I just want to say that on the May 1st, I was unable to make the Insight Community Forum. I was with Sarasota High School's baseball team. We did lose those two games, but we did end up ranked 12th out of 185 in Division VII for the state. So, that being said, I wouldn't have missed it. Yes, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, but today is actually National Teacher Appreciation Day. Trump you, Trump you, Trump you. So I would just say, at the end of the day, I appreciate, because we are only good as the people that work for us. Our teachers are amazing. They've been, always have been amazing, our parents, our staff. Again, the presentations show it, what we're continuing to do, the superintendent, Chief O'Day, always a great presentation. No longer a doctor, no longer, just a chief. So with that, there's a couple of important events coming up. I'll just point out real quick. On the 16th is going to be the Polytech graduation. On the 17th is Pine View's graduation. Then on the 20th, we have the school board meeting. It's at 6 o'clock. It's actually at City Hall in Northport. So it's the 20th, 6:00 p.m. in Northport's City Hall. I would tell any of the parents or the staff, or anybody who wants to look, go to the website, GreatJobSarasotaCountySchools.net, go to events, you'll see everything. This is a very, very busy month for our students and for our staff. And the best part of the job is, and I can tell you from this board member's perspective, is standing on stage, being able to shake the student's hand as they're getting ready to go. As a graduate here, I stood on the same stage at the same spot as all three of my kids did. So to stand up there is, for me, is quite a, quite a great feeling and opportunity that I never thought I would ever get. So with that, we will see you at the graduations, otherwise on the 20th, 6:00 p.m., Northport City Hall. We are adjourned.